Okay, welcome to the March nineteenth meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Trinity County. We will begin with the pledge and Supervisor Fraser will lead us.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Military.
Okay, we will begin with presentations under clerk of the board. Item one point one is receive a presentation from Tom Stokely, water policy consultant regarding the Trinity River water issues. No fiscal impact. Welcome, Tom. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I tried to send the PowerPoint, but it wouldn't go through, so we're going to try to share a screen here and see if that works.
Okay.
Let's see PowerPoint.
We know you know water. Let's see if you know your technology.
Yeah, looks like my face is sort of a little funny there. Let me change my position here. Maybe that's a little bit better. Hang on, I gotta somehow change my settings to allow it to work, and I'm not sure how to do that.
Ashley, we have it so that they can script, she share their screen. We don't have it limited. Okay. And Tom, you know where the screen share function is in Zoom?
I do, but it says I have to open my security and privacy to grant access. So let me see if I can get in there. Hang on a second.
Sure.
Security and privacy. Let's see. Accessibility. Zoom. Well, doesn't seem to be working. Click the lock to make changes. There we go. There we go. Okay, let's see if that works now. See. Now we're not finding it. Well, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
PowerPoint. Never quite got this down. Let's see. Situations. Oh, it's see PowerPoint. Well, I'm afraid I failed the technology course.
Okay, well, if you can, you can send it over afterwards and Ashley can post it and share it with folks. And we'll just listen to what you have to say.
Yeah, I sent it to you last Friday. I'm going to send it to you right now, Rick. Maybe you can.
Are you sending it as an attachment?
Yes.
So maybe it's just too big of a file.
Well, I also sent it as a PDF and that didn't seem to work either. But hang on a second here. We'll see if you can get it. And maybe you can figure out how to get it to the clerk of the board. One second here. The squirrels are slow in the cage. Okay. I just sent it to you, Rick. I don't know if you got it.
Not yet.
I'm gonna send it to you as a PDF as well. Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and get started, I guess.
Okay.
Thanks for having me here today. I'm Tom Stokely. I'm a salmon and water policy consultant for Save California Salmon. And I requested this time to give you a report on water issues affecting the Trinity River in Trinity County. The first issue is sites reservoir. And I worked with Humboldt County over the last couple of years to get a term and condition in the water right application for sites reservoir. And it basically says that sites will not be filled with Trinity River water. This is really quite a victory because earlier when they did a, the first draft E I S C I R, it showed that they were going to take water out of Trinity Lake in the spring during some drier years, which would have meant a drawdown of Trinity Lake early. And also it wouldn't, would have created temperature problems by not moving water through Lewiston Reservoir in the late summer and fall. So the current term and condition reads that the sites projects diversions to storage under this permit shall not include the diversion or re diversion of Trinity River water. Parentheses, water diverted by the Bureau of Reclamation from the Trinity River watershed into the Sacramento watershed pursuant to its water rights. Furthermore, the sites projects diversions to storage under this permit shall not negatively impact current and future Trinity River obligations of the Bureau of Reclamation, including but not limited to those obligations specified in the nineteen fifty nine contract between the United States and Humboldt County, the Trinity River Main Stem Fishery Restoration Record of Decision and the Long Term Plan to Protect Adult Salmon in the Lower Klamath River and related obligations of the Bureau's water rights. There are other significant negative impacts of sites. The final E I R was approved in November and a coalition of fishing and environmental groups that I work with have filed litigation against the final E I R. There are also still a number of outstanding protest issues, but the Trinity is not one of them. And a water rights hearing by the State Board will begin in June twenty twenty four to resolve the protests and issue a permit potentially. So I'm not recommending any action on that. Is there any questions about that?
No, that's good news, though.
Tom, just, sorry, just for the people in the audience and maybe people who don't know, where is the sites reservoir?
Oh, yes, my PowerPoint would have given a location map, but I was too inept to get it up on the screen. It's west of Maxwell in the Sacramento Valley in Calusa County. If you look west of I five, you see there are some mountains there. And there's a kind of a bowl that's ringed by smaller hills east of the coast range. And that's where they want to put it. I believe there is a town up there, an old town called Chrome. There are also Cinnabar deposits up there, and we're pretty sure it's going to probably result in methylation of mercury as well as growing blue green algae. So the water coming out of it may be very toxic, but it's not your fight to fight right now. So did you get that PowerPoint at all, Rick? Nope, it bounced again, I guess.
Yeah, I think it's probably too big. I think, Tom, the only way would be if you put it into a Google Drive or Dropbox and then sent us a link to it. That's probably the only way.
All right, we'll just skip it for now.
Okay.
Um, so the next item is the state water board's phase two, phase two Bay Delta Plan update. And what this is, is an update of the Water Quality Control Plan for the Bay Delta. Phase two is the Sacramento River and its tributaries, of which the Trinity is one of them, even if it's artificial. The first phase for the San Joaquin River was completed in twenty eighteen, and it established flow objectives for the lower San Joaquin River and tributaries and revised salinity objectives for the Southern Delta. The last time the Bay Delta Plan was updated was nineteen ninety five, even though it's actually required every three to five years. I might add that just day before yesterday, I think, or maybe it was yesterday, a state court ruled that phase one was legal. There were something like a hundred and twelve claims against that. And they ruled that the State Board had the authority and they did a good job. So it did stand. It is anticipated under phase two that there will be higher Sacramento River unimpaired flows and increased Delta outflows. As a result, some of that water at this point is going to come from Trinity Lake, and it will have negative impacts to the Trinity River and Trinity Lake. I had a little graph on my PowerPoint that showed a decreased storage in Trinity Lake from what's called the voluntary agreements. The draft staff report for this prepared by the Water Board showed that the Trinity River provided an average of six hundred and ninety four thousand acre feet a year to the Sacramento River in the years nineteen eighty six to twenty twenty one. Some of the limited analyses that they have for the Trinity River show that these proposed voluntary agreements that no Trinity River entity is a party to will decrease Trinity Lake storage. Now, these voluntary agreements are an alternative to actually coming up with fixed flow regimes and requiring certain water users to reduce their diversions. So what the voluntary agreements in the essence are doing is they're using more Trinity Lake water to make up for the fact that some of these diverters should be reducing their diversions from the Sacramento River and its tributaries. The plan in my mind is so egregious against the Trinity River that it doesn't even show Trinity River and Trinity Lake on the map. They omitted it. They looked at every single tributary of the Sacramento River for increased flows and reducing impacts except for the Trinity River. And basically what they said is, well, we're happy to take over six hundred thousand acre feet a year from the Trinity River. We're going to take a little bit more, but we're not going to provide any protection whatsoever for the Trinity River because the Trinity River is not part of the Bay Delta, and it should therefore be ignored. It's, it's really bad. The county did submit comments to the Water Board, I believe, by January nineteenth, and so did many others. And my recommendation to you is to continue to submit comments, attend hearings and state that there's a need for additional evaluation of impacts to the Trinity River from all alternatives being considered. They didn't actually even evaluate impacts from all the alternatives and ask for appropriate mitigation in the form of Trinity specific temperature and cold water pool protections in the Bureau's state water permits for the Trinity River. I will just add that every time there's a water deal in the state of California, they take a little bit more from the Trinity River, from Trinity Lake. It's really a death by a thousand cuts. This has been going on for decades, and there simply isn't any more to give. So I hope that you'll continue to stay involved in that project. Are there any questions about that?
No, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, the next item is Water Right Order ninety dash five in the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board's triennial basin plan review. The Water Quality Control Plan for the North Coast Region, which we refer to as the North Coast Basin Plan, contains temperature objectives for the Trinity River that were approved by the EPA as Clean Water Act standards way back in nineteen ninety two. There's an attachment in the board report that is the letter of approval from the EPA. These current objectives are sixty degrees at Douglas City from July first to September fifteenth, fifty six degrees from, at Douglas City from September first to October first, and fifty six degrees to the North Fork Confluence, October first to December thirty first. Now, these temperature objectives are only partially implemented through something called Water Right Order ninety dash five. It was adopted in nineteen ninety by the State Water Board. It was an effort to implement basin plan temperature objectives for the Sacramento River. Trinity County participated at that time, and we were able to get a provision in there that basically said the Trinity River shall not be harmed by diversions for Sacramento River temperature control, and it includes the fifty six degree requirement at Douglas City and the North Fork. It does not include the sixty degree objective for the summertime. Unfortunately, it does not include all other uses of diversion of Trinity water, such as hydro power, Bay Delta outflow, agricultural use, municipal industrial use. So over the last ten years, those temperature objectives and requirements in Water Right Order ninety dash five have been violated multiple times by the Bureau of Reclamation. The State Water Board in its order from nineteen ninety required a report to the executive director of the State Water Board when they didn't meet those objectives, those requirements, and no report has ever been filed. The State Water Board has never taken any enforcement action. And most recently, a gentleman by the name of Michael Palmer filed a complaint with the State Water Board that Water Right Order ninety dash five was being violated. And they basically told him there's not a problem. The Trinity River doesn't, basically doesn't have any temperature protection unless the Bureau is actively diverting water through the Clear Creek Tunnel. So what we, this confirmed what I've known for many years, that basically while the Sacramento River has temperature control, the Trinity River has virtually no protection. The Trinity Record of Decision had targets in there, but they're not enforced. There's a six hundred thousand acre foot minimum pool written into the Record of Decision through a biological opinion with National Marine Fisheries Service. It's not complied with. So basically, the Bureau of Reclamation theoretically can drain Trinity Lake to a hot mud puddle, cook all the fish in the hatchery, cook all the fish in the river, and there will be no repercussions. I've literally been trying since nineteen ninety to get a water right hearing by the State Board to fully implement the Trinity River temperature objectives to no avail. I will also add that the Trinity River was promised a water right hearing in nineteen eighty nine and again in nineteen ninety. So the state has not complied with this word, and they're again happy to take Trinity River water and not willing to protect it at all. Furthermore, we've discovered since nineteen ninety two that the fifty six degree temperature objective to protect Chinook eggs in the river is inadequate. It should be fifty three and a half degrees. And actually, for Coho salmon, it should be forty eight to fifty degrees. If you look on page three of the written report I sent you, there's a little graph at the bottom. The blue line is water temperature. The red line below is eyed egg survival. And you can see that in twenty twenty one at the Trinity River Hatchery, when the temperature there was fifty three point six degrees Fahrenheit, it killed ninety five percent of the Coho eggs in the Trinity River Hatchery. So this is what we call an unpermitted take of a listed species. Coho salmon are listed as threatened under the state and the Federal Endangered Species Act. And in twenty twenty two, the Pacific Coast Federation of Fishermen's Associations submitted a sixty day notice of intent to sue the Bureau of Reclamation over this unpermitted take of Coho in the Trinity River. And that is the reason that there is a reconsultation going on right now with a separate Trinity River biological opinion being the, hopefully, the long term result. In twenty twenty two, the Bureau of Reclamation was again planning to meet the fifty six degree requirement in Water Right Order ninety dash five, which would have killed most of the Coho salmon again. So because of the letter that PCFFA sent that I did actually help draft, PCFFA and the Uroch Tribe with assistance from Earth Justice threatened to sue the Bureau of Reclamation unless they bypassed the Trinity Power Plant and released colder water from the bottom of the dam. The Bureau of Reclamation in California was just going to go ahead and kill the Coho. But then I guess Washington DC relented. So in twenty twenty two, we saved the Coho run without litigation, which I think was another big victory, but it was only temporary. And again, if the Bureau of Reclamation complies with Water Right Order ninety dash five, they will kill Coho in the Trinity River. They will also kill winter run Chinook and the commercially and recreationally valuable fall run in the Sacramento River. So meanwhile, the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board is undergoing what's called a triennial basin plan review to determine priorities for updating the North Coast Basin Plan over the next three years. The county submitted comments based on recommendations from the Fish and Game Advisory Commission. And unfortunately, the Trinity River temperature objectives are not a priority. And so again, Water Right Order ninety dash five allows killing Trinity River Coho and Chinook. And the Water Quality Control Plan for the North Coast Region fails to be protective of Trinity River salmon. It's listed and unlisted. There was going to be a February hearing of the North Coast Regional Board, but I think it's been postponed to April or later. So I would recommend that the county use every opportunity to remind the State Board that the Trinity River has little, if any, temperature protection while it continues to be relied on very heavily, especially during drought. They need to fulfill their thirty five year old promise to amend Water Right Order ninety dash five or hold a Trinity River Water Right Hearing for temperature protection. Other opportunities, including protesting water right change applications by the Bureau of Reclamation, protesting something called temporary urgency change petitions, commenting the annual State Board approval of the Bureau of Reclamation's Sacramento River Temperature Management Plan, which should be coming out soon, and also writing to the governor and state legislators, to provide funding for a Trinity River Water Right Hearing, which of course, given the state budget issues, is probably a nonstarter. And my second recommendation is to testify at the regional board's upcoming hearing on the triennial basin plan review. I believe you did submit written comments.
Tom, I have a question for you real quick or a couple of them. When, what percentage of the Trinity River is hatchery Coho?
I don't know the answer to that.
90 plus?
I think it's fairly significant.
Um, and what percentage did they kill in the hot water?
Well, I think overall it was about 75%.
So the majority?
Yes, the majority would be the correct statement.
Uh, as we go along and talk about water temperature diversions, and I know we need them for power and I'm fully behind that. Once the cooler Trinity River water gets over to the Sacramento River, what is the difference in temperature and does it help control temperature at all in the Sacramento River?
The only time Trinity River water can help temperatures in the Sacramento River is if it's sent over in the spring before Whiskey Town heats up, which would essentially drain Trinity Lake early and cause temperature problems on the Sacramento, I mean, on the Trinity River in the fall for the spawners. If you send Trinity River water over in the summertime, it's significantly warmer than releases from Shasta Dam. Uh, I have some graphs on that and it's usually several degrees warmer. From Shasta Dam than it is from the Spring Creek Power Plant into Keswick. So when they send Trinity water over and they say they need it to keep the winter run cold in the summertime, it's just not, it's not correct. And if they do send it over early, then it harms the Trinity. It, it can help the Sacramento River. I've actually gotten into arguments with people of my persuasion who think that they should just sacrifice the Trinity River in order to save the winter run Chinook on the Sacramento.
And Tom, I noticed, um, in the response to Mr. Palmer's letter or complaint, a couple of things. One was, and I think you just mentioned it, they, they basically said, if we're not taking your water to control our Sacramento River temperature, then we can do whatever we want. Uh, because it's only regulated if we're taking it for that specific purpose. And then they reference, uh, that while the temperatures were above the objective numbers, it was only for a couple of days. And I'm, I'm as far from an expert in this as I could possibly be, but my understanding is it doesn't take even two days to have a devastating impact. Is that accurate?
Well, I can't speak to the specifics of that, but I can tell you if they're trying to meet a monthly average of 56 degrees and it's 60 degrees for the second half of the month and 52 degrees for the first half, you're probably going to kill most of the fish.
Okay.
So Tom, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but every day of exceedance, um, say there was four, four days of exceedance today. That would go down as four hours of exceedance. And essentially you would need six four-day exceedances to equal one day on the chart?
I'm not sure, Liam. Sorry, I'm
It's all right.
Not as up on fish biology as I ought to be. I will add one thing though. When they bypassed the power plant in 2022, that was a loss of hydroelectric power. And nobody likes to see that. And I know Paul Hoosier has talked into your board previously about the need for a minimum cold water pool in Trinity Lake. And while Paul and I may be apart on some things, I think we both agree that if the reservoir can get, be kept high enough that they don't have to bypass the power plant to provide cold water for fish, then everybody benefits. At least on this side of the hill.
And, and Tom, a lot of these things that you're referring to seem to come back to something that you had suggested to this board in previous updates uh, about making use of a water expert attorney to help represent some of these rights. Is that, are these the kinds of things that you're referring to that if we were to take that approach, that we should have them focusing upon?
Definitely. I think the reinitiation of consultation, um, would be a place to have a, a, a good water rights attorney. Uh, and also if you ever got involved in some kind of, uh, litigation, for instance, over the Bay Delta Phase Two Plan, that would be another place to, uh, to point it out because basically what they're going to have is uh, unmitigated negative impacts to the Trinity River from sending more Trinity River water over the hill to meet, uh, Delta outflow requirements and to fulfill these so-called voluntary agreements.
Okay.
So those are two issue areas.
Thank you. And, uh, I don't know if we paused you or you were done. So let, if you have more, please continue.
Oh, I think I got a phone call on my computer and I had to take it, but I'm ready for the next one, reinitiation of consultation.
Okay.
So again, that 60-day notice of intent to sue in May 2022 was due to the unpermitted take of Coho salmon in 2021. And that is resulting in a separate reinitiation of consultation that's ongoing. Uh, there were several meetings about the Trinity reconsultation in 2023. Trinity County and others submitted a local alternative that as far as I know is being fully analyzed as an alternative in the EIS for the reconsultation. Unfortunately, as we found out last week, the Trinity reconsultation is behind the larger CVP-wide reconsultation. So there's going to be a, an EIS for the larger CVP reconsultation. And as far as I know, it'll just include the Trinity River Record of Decision as part of that. And then later on, there will be a supplemental environmental impact statement for the Trinity uh, reconsultation that will be completed later. And I don't know when that supplemental EIS will be completed. I think the CVP wide one is supposed to be completed maybe by this summer with a record of decision and a biological opinion for the larger CVP in 2025. I'm not sure that the Trinity, uh, supplemental EIS and reconsultation will be completed in 2025. Uh, so things are moving slowly. And really this reinitiation of consultation is probably your best bet to get things like temperature protection, uh, minimum cold water pool, uh, a diversion schedule that provides, uh, the correct temperatures for the Trinity River, both a little warmer at times and a little and cooler in the, in the fall when the spawners are there. Um, one item of note is that Humboldt County has finalized its plan for in-stream use of its 50,000 acre foot contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. It will be included for analysis as part of the reinitiation of consultation and the NEPA process. I don't know if that's going into the larger CVP-wide EIS or the supplemental one for the Trinity. But their plan for in-stream flows does call for increased fall and winter flows. And the, uh, plan and associated modeling can be found at humboldt.gov.org back, backslash three, four, one, nine, backslash Trinity hyphen river. So you can take a look at what their plan is for that. Again, that is another one of the broken promises from the 1955 Trinity River Act. Humboldt County's 50,000 acre feet was included uh, in the 55 act, and then it was included in the 1959 state water permits as well as a actual contract signed between the Bureau of Reclamation and the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. So my recommendation to you is to continue to participate as a cooperating agency for the EIS and provide comments on the process to encourage adoption of the local alternative. And if necessary, join litigation against, uh, one or more of the biological opinions if you don't get what you want. Are there any questions about that?
I have a question, Tom. So 1955, 59, the contract read for Humboldt County and downstream water users?
Yes.
Are, are we, since the water comes out of the dam, are we considered a downriver water user, Trinity County?
I believe you could be, for instance, if, uh, Douglas City wants to, uh, form a a water district or expand the powers of the Community Services District there to provide water to people on Browns Creek, Mirren's Creek, Indian Creek. Uh, they could possibly purchase some of that water from Humboldt County if Humboldt County was willing. The thing of it is though, that Humboldt County actually has the contract. Nobody else has the contract. So, um, the other issue is that under the area of origin statutes, the county of origin statutes in the, uh, state water code, if Douglas City wanted to apply for a water right on the Trinity River, they would be given a preferential water right, just the way that Weaverville Community Services District was given a preferential water right on the Trinity River. And that water is basically superior to the water rights of the Bureau of Reclamation. So as long as nobody's diverting more water out of the river than is coming in with natural inflows, uh, the Bureau of Reclamation theoretically is required to release that additional water from Lewiston Dam. Although the amount of water involved is very small. But if you look in the water rights for the Weaverville Community Services District's, uh, water permit to divert water at Douglas City, it says in there that it's, um, superior water right to the Bureau of Reclamations. So I don't think you need Humboldt County's water if local people want to divert water from the Trinity River. But you could purchase some or make a deal with Humboldt County if you'd like. Hope I answered your question.
Yep, thank you. So in Humboldt County using their 50,000 acre feet as, uh, fall and winter increase in flows?
Yes.
Um, is that not already covered in proviso one? Are they using it for fish rehabilitation? I guess would be my first question.
You know, I have to look at their plan. I haven't looked at it very closely. That might be a question to ask Humboldt County. It does get a little murky between proviso one and proviso two in the Trinity River Act of 1955. But I believe they're trying to use it for unmet needs for in-stream flows.
And, and they still have no infrastructure to take it into Humboldt County proper?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions at this point? Tom, I wanted to get some clarification. You referenced about, um, you know, we've had some success with our local alternative being given some recognition, but that the timing of dealing with it could be basically after decisions are made about the Central Valley Project. Did I take that in right?
Yes, there'll be two biological opinions. One for the larger CVP and one for the Trinity River and the CVP wide one comes first.
And so if the CVP decision is made absent what will still be being worked on at that time for Trinity. And then the Trinity comes in and has, I'll just call it conflicting findings. Does that mean that a whole nother reconsultation is then supposedly triggered? Or is it automatically adjusted? Or is it ignored until they get around to it 20 years from now?
Well, if the Trinity biological opinion comes out in a timely manner, what they've said is that they would amend the larger CVP-wide biological opinion to reflect the Trinity biological opinion if there's some kind of conflict. But who knows what's going to happen?
Okay.
It's really difficult to know. And I will say that, um, the Interior Department is really good at putting poison pills into these things. Uh, when the 2000 Record of Decision came out, uh, if some of you recall, Trinity County was the CEQA lead agency for an EIS EIR on the Record of Decision, but Trinity County never certified the EIR because all along, uh, we told them through our attorneys who were expert CEQA lawyers that they did not have their mitigation for impacts to listed species framed correctly. What they said in the draft EIS EIR is there will be impacts to winter run Chinook and other species in the Central Valley, but our mitigation measures will come out in the final biological opinion. They did not give the public an opportunity to comment on what those mitigation measures might be. And in fact, when the final biological opinion came out by the US Fish and Wildlife Service, they came up with a poison pill, something called X2, which is the mixing zone of the freshwater and the saltwater in the Bay Delta. They said if, if the saltwater basically goes more than, I think it was one kilometer inland, you have to reconsult. That was never considered in a draft EIS. The public never had an opportunity to look at it. And when it went to a federal district court in Fresno, the judge immediately ruled that that wasn't good enough. And he issued a temporary restraining order or preliminary injunction against the Record of Decision and it took a couple more years of litigation and going to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals on that. But I can tell you right now, it would never would have passed through CEQA. And if the county had adopted the EIR, uh, the county would have been sued, the county would have lost and the county would have had to pay, uh, court fees to the Westlands Water District and the other litigants against the Record of Decision. And I know the restoration program was very angry because there was no EIR approved. But the fact of the matter is it was their own fault. They did not give the county money to defend the document. And at that particular point in time, Trinity County was very close to declaring municipal, municipal bankruptcy. And it would have been absolutely foolhardy to approve it. So, uh, I'm just waiting for the poison pill to happen in this biological opinion. Uh, I simply don't trust the Interior Department and what they might do to screw the Trinity River over to keep moving more water over the hill. We're going to just have to remain vigilant.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I noticed we're getting close to the hour. Is, um, you, you have more?
Yeah, a couple more things, just real quick. Uh, winter flows. Uh, as you know, the, uh, winter flows were vetoed by Trinity County and the Hoopa Valley Tribe at the September TMC meeting and again in January, uh, to find a middle ground. Uh, our biologist, Joe Polos came up with a, an analysis and developed some alternative winter flows. Uh, the mimic two alternative that he came up with, which was 26,000 to 107,000 acre feet was submitted to the TMC. Uh, the TMC counter proposed with higher flows from 60 to 120,000. Uh, Trinity County and Hoopa rejected it and the motion failed. Um, my recommendation is to continue the discussions to determine if there are winter flows that would help the fishery without significantly impacting the local economy. You may wish to try to get some kind of mitigation from the restoration program and its partners such as, uh, mitigation in the form of revised fishing regulations for the fly fishing only zone to change the opener from April 1st to January 1st. That might provide some mitigation. Um, at this point, I am recommending that you not change the TMC voting rules uh, from a super majority because you will lose your power. I have actually promoted for years changing that because it's used as a weapon for the budget. But at this point, it's the only thing you've got left. And I'll move along quickly here. We've got the Delta Conveyance Project and that's building a tunnel underneath the Delta. Uh, I worked on a case in 2018 for the previous twin tunnels, prepared testimony and again asked for mitigation in the way, in the form of a minimum cold water pool and temperature protection for the Trinity River in a water right hearing. Uh, they never completed it, so we never got what we asked for. But there's another chance to protest it and the county may wish to protest, um, protest the water right application. It's a change in point of diversion. I don't think that you have the resources to follow through with the case in chief, but it might be useful to file a protest and help some of us, uh, provide some expert witnesses and policy testimony at a water right hearing later this year or next year. Also, um, the Delta Tunnel is at a real crucial point. The courts have, uh, overturned the ability of the Department of Water Resources to use language from the original state water project to authorize revenue bonds. Uh, we think that, uh, the governor in the May revised budget may over, try to overturn the appellate court decision and authorize DWR to sell these revenue bonds. So a couple of things the board, um, could do would be to potentially, um, comment on those, uh, that language in the May revised budget as well as again, uh, file a protest. And then I just wanted to give you a pat on the back for the permanent water contracts where you joined in litigation with San Joaquin County and others against the validation of the Westlands Water District permanent contracts. Unfortunately, those contracts are still in place. And I think there are also, uh, temporary contracts. So I would just encourage you to, uh, continue commenting and getting involved and stay in touch with attorney Tom Keeling who represented you in that case. Are there any questions on, uh, the Delta Conveyance Project or the water contracts?
I have a question on about NEPA and you mentioned it here under recommendation. Is NEPA basically the only way for us to tease out the economic loss to Trinity County? Basically, the only way for us to tease out the economic loss to Trinity County as far as the EIS EIR, SEQA, is NEPA? That would let us know somewhere in the range of what we've lost.
Yeah, I think that NEPA is probably your best bet at looking at economic impacts. I think that SEQA, and I could be wrong, but I think that SEQA is more of actual environmental impacts. And of course, NEPA is a federal environmental document and SEQA is the state environmental process. So that's a good place to ask for your impacts to be evaluated.
So you'd mentioned cold water pool. Are are we still somewhat in agreement at six hundred thousand acre feet?
No, it was one point two to one point five million acre feet.
Well, you know, uh, yes, I agree, but um. What would be the lowest you'd like to see it draw down to?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand. There's a bureau report that says below seven hundred and fifty thousand. It's very problematic to meet temperature requirements.
And we'd like one, two to one, five to start with?
Yeah, that's what our modeler told us. Back when we testified in twenty eighteen on the uh, previous twin tunnels.
Thank you, Tom.
And one other thing, summer flows. I know this has caused a little stir, but if you look at the uh. Trinity Resource Conservation District's Summer Twenty Twenty-three Conservation Almanac, pages ten to eleven. Uh, there's a uh. An article on uh. How it might be a good idea to cut summer flows to allow stratification in the pools. I would be very cautious about that. Uh, it's a theory, and even if it did work to help protect fish. It would literally destroy your whitewater boating industry. And uh, I think you should uh, keep a close eye on that. I don't think it's gonna be coming up right away. But there is a big push to do that. But if you recall, the spring Chinook used to move upstream of Lewiston and Trinity Dams. Prior to the dams being put in place and the reason the river is so cold. And the flows are so high below the dams in the summer is to keep those spring Chinook alive. They are listed as a state threatened species, and I believe they're petitioned for threatened species under the Federal Endangered Species Act. Uh, and again, you have other issues like whitewater boating, the Hoopa Tribes uh. Inflow uh intake for their water system as well. And then the last thing I'm gonna talk about, and it wasn't in the report, it was in the PowerPoint that you didn't get. But I really feel that there needs to be reform of the Trinity Management Council. Um, I was the last chairman of the Federal Advisory Committee, the Trinity Adaptive Management Working Group. And we sent our last letter on the twenty-first of March twenty seventeen, and I think this is probably why the TAMWAG was dissolved. And here's what the letter said. The letter said, "The self-dealing nature of the Trinity Management Council. Whereby member entities can vote on their own funding and block motions to do otherwise. Because of supermajority voting rules is inherently corrupt." The TAMWAG favors dissolving the T the TAMWAG. And merging it with the TMC, similar to the old Trinity River Task Force. It is duplicative and wasteful for staff and other participants to have two groups, different groups discussing the same issues. All I can say is that the way the votes work on the TMC on the budget. It would be as if Trinity County were having a contract with Liam Store. And Liam were allowed to vote on the motion to give himself a contract. That's the way it works on the TMC. The TMC members vote on a budget. And then many of those members get no bid contracts, and so there's a total conflict of interest there. And I believe it stifled uh progress, it stifled investment in your watersheds. And I think it's one of the big reasons. That the restoration program is not widely beloved in Trinity County because it makes decisions based on self-interest. Rather than the interest of the river and the people who live here. So I'll leave you with that thought. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question, Tom. Um, you mentioned here, the theory is that flows that are low enough. In the pools will stratify and provide cold water for holding the spring Chinook. However, it's just a theory. How confident are you in that theory?
Well, I'm not very confident at all.
Okay. I know in the last several years, they put a hundred thousand plus cubic yards of gravel into the upper river above Douglas City, we'll say. What do what do you think that has done to our temperature objectives, the thom- telemetry tests? Um. Do you think they need to be done again?
Well, I think it would be really good to have not just a pool depth study, but a pool volume study. Um, all I can say is that from my understanding, historically, before the dams were there, the pools in the river were very, very deep. And they did indeed stratify, and I can't imagine that the pools now are anything close to as deep as they used to be. And at least from what I've heard anecdotally, some of those pools have filled in with gravel and sediment.
So I know Graham Matthews, I think, did the last telemetry test. Um, should we ask for another one? A- as far as volume, how hard is volume over telemetry?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know. I think it would be a good idea. Although the question is, what's your baseline? If you don't know what the volume of the pools was before, knowing what it is now, it doesn't really tell you what's happened.
All right, so here's a question out of left field. Since they're bringing down the dams on the Klamath. And their water is less than standardly good. How much water do you think the Klamath will ask the Trinity River to give them to help the lower forty and the fishery of the lower forty?
Well, it's hard to know. It depends on hydrology and weather. But you know, that lower Klamath Record of Decision where they release water to prevent a repeat of the fish kill in the lower uh. Klamath River uh since the year two thousand and three, there has been. Three hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and three acre feet. Released from Trinity Lake to augment flows in the lower Klamath River, and I don't think that's gonna stop.
And those are just pulse flows, correct?
Yeah, that's in addition to the rod flows. Thirty-eight thousand in two thousand and three, thirty-seven thousand acre feet in oh four, thirty-nine thousand in twenty twelve. Sixty-four, almost sixty-five thousand in twenty fourteen. It goes on and on. So. What I keep telling uh, the governor's office and people in power is that they need to have protection for Trinity River's cold water pool. Or the restoration of the Klamath will be a complete failure because they're not gonna have. Any cold water to release from Trinity Lake to save the fish in the lower Klamath.
So Tom, at this time, I think we give ten thousand acre feet to Clear Creek to cool that. Um, we give trendy water to to help Sacramento River water. Is that an effective use of our water?
Well, it keeps uh, listed spring Chinook alive in the Sacramento River, but it's not helping the Trinity, although it helps the Trinity by keeping it cold. Like last summer, the some of the water they released from Trinity for Clear Creek did help keep the Trinity River cold. But overall, it reduces your storage, but it's sort of a judgment call, Liam. Maybe a rhetorical question on your part.
Is there a reason to keep Whiskey Town at ninety-five percent full all all summer?
I think I lost you.
Is is there a reason to keep Whiskey Town Lake at ninety-five percent plus all summer long?
Well, I don't know. I've heard rumor of an agreement between the Bureau of Reclamation and uh, the National Park Service. To keep it full, but I've never seen it. I've never verified it. It's certainly nice for recreation.
Um, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anyone else have any questions for Tom?
Tom, thank you very much. We appreciate all the work that you do behind the scenes on on our behalf and. Uh, and for all the work that you put into this update. I really appreciate the written report and then this presentation.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your time today. And we'll be in touch.
Okay, we'll look forward to it, Tom. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we will move into public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the budget, the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up. Or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. So we will open to uh, public comment.
Good, good morning. I originally came here with one subject. Now I have two subjects, but. Uh, the this this last election, there's some issues that definitely need to be addressed. In twenty twenty-one, you guys voted to do new uh, district maps for the five districts. And uh, that map was used in twenty twenty-two. It was not used in twenty twenty-four. And you need to use that map and uh, for November. Or you guys are gonna get sued, which you've been sued before. And uh, my personal investigations that I I've seen, uh. I would recommend. Uh, running District Five's election again in November because there's some. Serious changes that need to be done there. That's my first one. My second one is what Tom just talked about. For some reason, my mailbox used to get the federal government's uh, documents on the Klamath River mapping and taking the dams out. And for some reason, the historic uh, salmon run only went up to the Lewiston town, never went abo- above that, but. As a child, I remember fishing for salmon up in Copy Creek, so I know they used to go up there. So my question is, if you're gonna take the dams out on the Klamath River to save the fish, then why not take the Trinity Dam out and save the fish?
Hello, Board and Chair. Uh, Dana Hauser from Hayfork. I am here to request a complete accounting of all of the cannabis funds from the cannabis program. From inception to current. Please and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Sorry, I got focused on my notes. Other public comment in the room? No? Uh, online?
Adrian?
Adrian Keyes from Hayfork. Thank you, uh, Chair and Supervisors. I've got a couple of requests for future agenda items. One of them being a presentation from the leadership of the Origins Council on the California Appalachians Program. And and its potential beneficial effects on our local community. Um, unfortunately, I had some crossed wires this last week. I was hoping to have it up for today, but it didn't happen. So hopefully the next available slot. Um, I'd love to 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 be able to bring that information to the board and to the public. Uh, a second presentation, unfortunately, I have to ask for this with the date uncertain.
I'm sorry, um, Adrian, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna interrupt you because. This actually is an item on the agenda for later today. We are going to be going over a proposed schedule of presentations. And so that would be the appropriate time to be providing input on that subject.
Oh, great. Thank you. I was under the impression it was on the structure of that document, not necessarily the content, so I'll hold my comments until.
Okay, now, sorry for the confusion. Thank you.
No problem, Rick. Thank you very much.
All right, anything else, Adrian? Guess not.
Uh, well, I also wanted to consider the workshop, which is not necessarily a Board of Supervisors meeting situation, so would it be appropriate to?
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I would love to see the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission do a joint public workshop. With the three primary regulatory agencies for the cannabis industry in California, the Department of Cannabis Control, uh. California Department Fish and Wildlife and State Water Resource Resource Control Board. To bring all of our 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 community, our planning commissioners and our supervisors. Onto the same page. Um, as we're continuing to work through the hopefully last phase of cannabis regulation in the county, uh, I think it's very important. To do so, as I've heard a lot of uh. Lack of information, lack of knowledge in in the comments and occasionally in questions from from the supervisors about. The regulatory scheme that we operate under, and we had done workshops like this in the past while we were doing the initial. Ordinance development, but it's been many, many years and basically everybody has changed over um. In both the commission and the supervisors and frankly, also i- in the planning department itself. And the cannabis division itself. So I would I would love to see. A joint community public workshop with all those agencies, chance for for a little bit of back and forth. And some significant sharing of of um, information on the regulatory scheme we work under. And thank you very much. That's it for me.
Thank you for your comments.
Patrick?
Can you hear me, Ward?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, my comment is about the California Fair Plan. And I just wanted to share my experience in hopes that um. I don't know if it's a subject that you guys would take up, but it needs to be brought into focus and discussion in the county because. Um, the California Fair Plan is the only option in my area of the county to get insurance. And they were incapable of serving me with a renewal uh, by the renewal date this year, and so I. Um, contacted them and was able to get a renewal and the increase was a hundred percent, so it doubled. Um, and it is a hardened home, or I was under the in- impression. So now my insurance is more than my taxes to the county. So I feel like. Um, I'd like to know whether other people are having this experience and if there are any other options and what. The county's position or um, what they might be able to do to help um, some of us homeowners. On top of that, just as a note, um, I am a permitted cannabis. Grower in the county, and I also was forced to build a dwelling. And I can't get that insured. So the insurance thing is really on my mind in terms of long-term investment in this community that I am invested in. Um, so that's my comment. I would love to see something come up in our community and discussion about this because it's unsustainable from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I have no other raised hands.
Okay. I will just share, I know that there are uh, have been multiple. Comments and discussions about the insurance issues here and CSAC. The State Association of Counties, the Rural RRC, uh. Number of entities all working together to try to get some changes there, and there actually are some changes that are taking place, but. They're slow moving and and it is a huge issue. So, okay, thank you. Well, that is it for public comment. We will move into reports. And start with a report from department heads. Seeing none, we will move to report from the County Administrative Officer. No reports, making up for our slow start. Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's uh, move on to the supervisor updates and Supervisor Fraser, let's start with you.
Right, um, I had no Iowa County travel since our last meeting. I will be going to Eureka next Thursday. And. Calusa County the following Wednesday for CGT cap. Um, besides that. I've had some discussions with Cody um, Smith, Building Department regarding updating. Um, I can't remember the exact ordinance number, but uh. More building code updates, code changes, and so I would like the board to um. Give me the go-ahead to bring county council into that discussion to draft an ordinance to present. So I I just think I should have board. Consent before I ask county council to help me draft the ordinance. So if we could get that, I'll move forward with that and bring something back, and then it would. I'm not sure I'd have to have council's input on whether that would need to go to the planning commission, because I don't think it'll be zoning based, but uh. An amendment to allow uh. Agricultural buildings without going through the permitting process, and it would be basically plagiarized from Humboldt County, so it should be quick and easy. Other than that, I have nothing to report at this point.
What what do you mean by agricultural buildings?
Um, it would, it's actually defined in state code when an agric. It would, it's actually defined in state code what an agricultural building is, but that would be like pole barns for hay storage or for equipment storage, anything ag-based. And it can't be a residence, it can't be lived in, it can't be, there are certain specifications that it's spelled out in state code. And I can bring, I'll bring all that back as backup. I just wanted to know if I could have Board consent to use County Council's time to actually turn that into an ordinance.
Just for specification, it's structures designed and instructed to house farm equipment, hay, grain, poultry, livestock, or other horticultural products.
Thank you. I remember when we were putting in our new barn, they said, "Well, if you'd done this X number of years ago, you wouldn't have required a permit, but now you do." And so you're looking to.
Make it so you don't have to again.
Interesting. Any input from the Board? Do we have consensus for him to work with County Council?
I'll play devil's advocate for half a second. Would it not be wise for us to see what the proposed content of that would be before we pay for council time to actually draft an ordinance that we then might have some concerns about?
If that would be, if that's the how the Board wants to do it, I'm more than happy to do that. I just trying to cut out a step so that I can actually bring an ordinance for the Board to look at and whether or not, then I would have to get consent to put it on the agenda. So it would be, instead of just bringing a concept, I could actually bring an ordinance. And then you guys would, at that time, be able to determine whether or not we want to agendize it if it needs to go to a PC or whatever. So I can, sorry, I can probably craft an ordinance myself. It might not be perfect. So, but at the discretion of the Board, whether, however you want to do it, I can bring a proposal at our next meeting of what my intentions are before having Council draft it. Or I can work with Council and draft it and bring the proposed ordinance to the next Board meeting.
Yeah, I just think that in terms of council time and just county finances, it might be prudent for you to write what you would have her clean up and put the proper language to and the, you know, legal parameters and have us take a look at that and see if it was something that we then were in favor of spending council time on to turn into an ordinance.
Okay. I'm okay with that, too. The only, my ask would be that let's, we would agendize that discussion for our next Board Supervisors meeting.
Can, we used to have a, we used to have a calendar there. We are missing one week, so that gives you a little extra time. Oh, no, I'm wrong. There is, yeah, it's two weeks.
So, yeah, I don't need time.
You're okay?
Anyone else? Based on Supervisor? Okay. All right, so we will plan on this being on the April 2nd agenda.
Okay.
As a.
Discussion, direction to staff.
Okay, Supervisor Cox?
Okay, so I did have out-of-county travel. I was at RCRC last Wednesday. And I'll go out of order here with my notes based on public comment and really kind of reiterating what Chair Lutwiler mentioned about CSAC. There is grave concern with RCRC and the collaboration of those 40 rural counties about our insurance issues. We are not alone, and it's one of the things I always appreciate about going to the RCRC meetings is it can very much begin to feel that way. And I empathize with what people are going through. I've had others approach me as well with what their situations are, and they are painful, to put it mildly. It is, however, somewhat discouraging to hear that it is a slow-moving process. It's a very large lift. So know that efforts are continuing, and it is, it is not lost on anybody. RCRC does bring in our top leaders from the state to address the 40 member county leaders. And this meeting, it was the California State Transportation Agency Secretary, tox Michigan, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly. So he did address the Board regarding Cal STA's priorities, emphasizing efforts to ensure rural communities thrive and maximize funding. The Secretary also discussed initiatives related to transit, weather, and electric vehicles. The RCRC Board of Directors closed out the session with a lengthy discussion with the Secretary on a variety of transportation-related topics. I personally had reached out to our Director of Transportation and asked if he had any comments, questions, or concerns that he wanted me to share with the Secretary. And he did have a brief list that were, though brief, impactful. There were so many supervisors wishing to make comment to the Secretary that unfortunately, I was not selected. But others were equally weighty and similar in nature. I did have opportunity by my proximity in the room to meet the Caltrans Director, Garth Hopkins. And I did offer to reach out to him directly with our Director's needs. But I say all that because it is awesome that our Director is the President of CAC, the California State Engineers Association. And so he'll be shoulder to shoulder with that gentleman in not too much time. So he'll be able to express those concerns directly for himself. We've been talking about state mandates that are unfunded to our county. This also is, has been taken up by RCRC. And the list of mandates that our directors had pulled together with the CAO's direction and leadership has been provided to them, and it was very useful and appreciated by their General Counsel. And so to address these apparent increase in unfunded state mandates experienced by counties in recent years, RCRC is working with others to promote a coordinated multi-county effort to aggressively pursue reimbursement claims through the Commission on State Mandates. It is anticipated that this project will entail collaborative decision-making among both large and small counties to identify legally reimbursable state mandates, select those appropriate for the Commission process, and equitably distribute the workload for pursuing these claims. This effort is ongoing, and RCRC staff will provide us with an update as the details are solidified. So that's an interesting approach to see if we can perhaps reclaim some of our funds. The AT&amp;T application for a carrier of last resort relief in March of 2023, which this Board did provide a letter of opposition, is also being pursued by RCRC in their efforts. PSA 2 meeting, this is something I would like to have us, as a county, find a way to better communicate to our population. And that is for those who need assistance with Medicare benefits. That paperwork is complex and confusing, and there is assistance available. And I do believe you can put your other hat on maybe and help folks know maybe how this information is provided. But Liz Ritz is a trained professional who is a Trinity County resident and provides Medicare beneficiaries counseling, enrollment, help, help for disabled adults. And she's available just with a phone call. Her number is available for publicity. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read that out so it'll, people can review it. It's 530-739-3818. So if you're confused at all about the portions of Medicare and how to apply for those benefits timely and structure yourself in a way that will be beneficial to you, she's available. So if you have anything to add to that. Okay, great. I do want to give an update on the effort to make our crosswalks safer. This is ongoing, and I continue to check in with our Caltrans Engineering Specialist, Brendan Finn. So last update from him, which is just a couple of days ago, he has worked on the Weaverville investigation in the last couple of weeks, but has not received concurrence from his manager yet. He hopes to get that in the next couple of weeks, and will update me with the proposed improvements and timeframes. And so basically, there are two things. As a stopgap to a larger measure, the first one has already been implemented. You'll see the shark-tooth painting on the pavement as you approach the crosswalk from both directions at the intersection of Highway 289 and Highway 3. So hopefully, that gives drivers a bit more of an alert that there is a crosswalk there. There's signage that will be implemented. I've looked for it. I do not see it in place yet. If you are eastbound, you will have some sort of signage will be showing up to alert us to that crosswalk. And then this, again, is while they're working on something that is bigger, flashier lights. I've requested, you know, something that is pedestrian activated so that we know there is someone in the crosswalk at this time. So more to come on that, and that is the end of my report.
Great. Good to see that we're getting some progress on that. Thank you. Supervisor Gogan?
Yeah, I was gonna say everything Jill said. I'm done. Actually, on the 14th this month, we had our Douglas City Community Meeting, the first one of the year, just to give a little vision on the, what we would like to see Douglas City look like in the next 20 years. There's not a lot in Douglas City that we can change, so we have a few plans going on, and there will be upcoming meetings on this also. We have one coming up in Hayfork, I think in April. They haven't given us a final date yet. But that should be much more significant. There's a lot more property there. Commercial zone, a lot more stuff to work with. And I think that will be a very, very important meeting for us. Myself and Heidi finalized the Solid Waste, Grand Jury Solid Waste Report. So we got that done. And I think that may be it. No auto-county travel.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Good morning. No, I had no auto-county travel. I did, however, attend some local meetings, both in person and via Zoom. I attended the Junction City PBA Workshop, which was highly informative, and I look forward.
Heidi, I'm sorry, can I just, what is that?
The Prescribed Burn Association?
Thank you.
That was highly informative, and I look, I really look forward to seeing private landowners through these PBA organizations be able to do advanced burning on their property in an effort to fire hard in their own lands. And in that meeting, we did have a brief conversation about the, our homeowner's insurance issue as well. I do want to say regarding that, that the California Fair Plan, to my knowledge, as I filled out the form myself, does have a discount, which is yet to be determined, for folks who have done hardening of their homes and the groundwork for clearing around their residence. So make sure to go on that website and look at that. And we'll all hope that it does give us some level of relief. In addition to that, I helped, both Liam and I have been working with the North Coast Resource Partnership in preparation for the meeting that will be held here at the end of next month, reaching out with the speakers and just providing information about locations and so forth. That's going to be a very good meeting that we're gonna be able to host here in our county, and we're looking forward to it. I also serve with the Work Development Program for the RCND. Had a meeting regarding that in an effort to develop a workforce, transferable workforce from either temporary to full-term employment through conservation programs. I met with Sunangway Elder in effort, went over the efforts that have been going on with the Native Wellness Coalition, and happy to hear that progress is being made in an attempt to get folks to and from their appointments. And I suggested that they engage also with our veterans because there's a lot of overlap there. That might be something that we can pair up. You know, other folks who are looking and have the same type of need. And then yesterday, I attended a meeting with the Trinity County RCD and the Lower Trinity PBA and our partners with, on the CWDG grant that's coming forward. Again, working with Western Trinity County landowners to have the opportunity to either have folks come in and do some of that fuels reduction or be able to do that on their own in collaboration with the PBA. So it seems like my life is fuels reduction and fire resilience. But it's a good thing to be working on. So that was the summation of the last two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may?
Oh, yes.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris? I followed the acronyms pretty well and got a bit lost. And I'm thinking that the public might be a little less advantaged than myself. So could you circle back a little bit to your last point? You're working to help, I'm guessing there are grant funds to help people reduce fuels on private property?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the, yes. So, so the, through the Fire Safe Council, councils and the Fire Safe Communities, maps have been, you know, created in different regions where there's an interface between, you know, public lands and these private lands. And so the monies that are coming available will be to, they will be filtered through organizations, organizations such as the Resource Conservation Districts and the Watershed Center to be able to either facilitate and actually do the land clearing on, on interface pieces of property between the private lands and the Forest Service land. Working also with the Forest Service on those plans, there is, it's acronym soup, Jill, I'm sorry. And sometimes I don't even remember what some of them are. But, yes, so this, the CWDG grant is going to make funds available to do roadside clearing in and out of neighborhoods and then also help folks directly on their private properties. And the PBAs are Prescribed Burn Associations. Those organizations work alongside in tandem with all of the many agencies to help private landowners develop fire, fire plans and smoke plans so that if you have done brush removal on your own property and you have properly piled within the size that is acceptable to burn, they give you a format, or they help you with the format to work with air quality so that you have all of your documents in order to do maybe like a five-acre worth of small pile burn on your property yourself. And hopefully, other folks in the, in the PBA organization may come and help you if they like. And this allows you to have all your documents in place to not be in gross negligence with the state in the event that something gets out of hand.
And for people to participate in that, they reach out to the RCD or the Watershed Center directly?
Yes, that, those would be good places to start. I'm not sure the contact for the Junction City PBA, but that's something that I'm, I can get for anyone that's interested. But I do know that the Fire Safe Councils and the folks who are leading those at the RCD and at the Watershed Center have the contact information.
Thank you.
It's a group of, the amount of collaboration that has to occur in this county in order to facilitate funds actually hitting the grounds is astronomical. It, I mean, I know we attend meetings and we just think, oh, it's, you know, the same five people or maybe we add someone different depending on the trend of the conversation. But these efforts are monumental. And they should not just be overlooked as, you know, something that's small. The amount of effort and collaboration is tremendous to get these projects off of the ground. And they bring in millions and millions and millions of dollars to our county.
Yeah, and to that point, if I could, I would just add that at the Governor's Wildfire Task Force Meeting, which was a very large gathering within the North State, Trinity County was highlighted for our collaborative efforts and largely pointed out, you know, our Watershed Center Director sat on that panel on the stage along with our Forest Supervisor. And it was facilitated by another member of our collaborative efforts. And we really got a gold star that day and were shown as the model for how to achieve great things, implement large amounts. for how to achieve great things, implement large amounts of funding successfully, see that work on the ground accomplished and indeed it is.
The, the same thing was recognized when I was in NACO in the public lands meetings that Trinity County stands head and shoulders above, above the rest in doing this type of work. And, well, I mean, we have science on tap. We have a bunch of people that are such natural resource nerds, if you will, that they get together to have presentations on their own time. But it speaks volumes to like what really matters and the volume of, of why we are able to get, to get done what we can get done. So we're super fortunate right now. We're going to see a lot of really good work, I think.
And, and just so I make sure I give credit where credit is due, memory clicked in and it was our Watershed Center Director that facilitated everything and our RCD Executive Director was on that panel with our forest supervisor. And so that Trinity County presence is huge. And again, thanks so much to all of them.
And I know we're a little behind this morning, but you did mention the North Coast Resource Partnership Meeting taking place here in Weaverville, which I think is really cool. And, and that is an opportunity the public can participate. So would you just spend a minute or two to talk about that organization and the focus and what people might experience if they attended in April?
Yes, let me get the dates pulled up here so that I am speaking. The, the meeting is held the 25th and the 26th of April. We are currently working on getting the location set and more information will be, will be to come. But the, the North Coast Research Resource Partnership Group and Liam, please jump in as you're part of that as well, provides guidance and potential funding for natural resource work. It's a, it's an amazing organization that brings together tribes, government agencies, department or from county and then federal and state and other special interest groups to come together and make huge collaborative choices on where to allocate funds on different natural resource projects throughout our region. From everything from alternative energy to fire resiliency to salmon work and watershed work. Just it's, it's, it's quite a great place for money to be. Kind of gets funneled through and it's, it's very locally directed. So that's helpful as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Have we decided on the CD Hall yet?
I'm not sure. I, I will, I, I'm work, we've been going back and forth with the organizers and and we'll have that information to follow.
So just to add on to what Heidi said, this group is a very big group that's responsible for getting tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars towards some of the projects they do. Myself and Heidi joined up with about six other supervisors, I think, for a illegal anti-cannabis cleanup, which we all know will cost millions of dollars, but we're, we're in the beginning of it now. I think that we'll be able to get out there next year or two and start to clean up some of these abandoned properties, whether it be fencing, PVC, whatever it might be, which we desperately need, but it was nice of them to ask us to form that, that ad hoc. So we participate heavily and hope it works out for all.
I'll just read real quick, Rick, since you asked, the North Coast region is home to large expanses of natural working lands and the, the North Coast Partnership. I can't see how many counties, but there are many. Oh. It's comprised of Del Norte, Humboldt, Trinity, Siski, Modoc, Mendocino and Sonoma Counties in addition to tribal lands. That's the partnership is made up of, of those, of those designated areas within the North Coast region.
Great, thank you. I was just able to attend that one meeting when the two of you couldn't attend. And I, I was super impressed with what they're, what they've done and, and what they're working on and their openness to new things like that. The cleanup of properties. So that's awesome. Thank you. Okay, for District One, No Outta County Travel, Disaster Council met on March 12th. Always a great information exchange. We had two new participants, one of whom will be inviting to speak to the board because we thought there was some, something really interesting there. We'll talk about that later today. Community plan workshops that were mentioned, I was, joined the Weaverville Workshop since a portion of that community falls within District One. And I, I would just say it was not only strong turnout as we had in District, or in Lewiston's Community Plan Workshop, but it was really great dialogue. I, I was just really impressed with the level of variety and focus on, on the way forward. We got a little hung up in Lewiston on some things and didn't get as deep as we did in Weaverville. So I hope that the, the future meetings go as well as that one did. Economic development, I met with the Head of the USDA Rural Development Organization and shared information about various resources of, of funding and support that are available to Trinity County. So there's some really great opportunities for us for funding there. We just missed one that the deadline was in February, but it gives us time to prepare for next year. California job first, that process continues. Subcommittee meetings are taking place later this month. And we're still as long, as far as I know, heading towards a May timeframe for awarding some of those funds, which will be exciting. Economic Development Roundtable, work is underway for an inaugural meeting in April. This would be open to the public and the goal is, is, goals include building relationships, sharing information, aligning our efforts, increasing collaboration and identifying and overcoming obstacles. And basically we've just found that we're finding out more and more about people that are working on economic development. And we feel that need to bring them together and get a little more alignment and focus and see how we can collaborate more effectively. Economic Development Finance Working Group, one of these touchpoints that we've been making, learning about new resources. We've now begun to be invited to special workshops that are on different sources and approaches to economic development funding. So as these kinds of information become available, we'll share them. That's the kind of thing that can be shared at a roundtable. So everybody around it knows about it instead of one or two people who attend those meetings. So we're looking forward to just building upon all these resources that are available to us that I, I just frankly think we have been off our radar for a while. With the US Forest Service, I met with Rachel Burkey, our Forest Supervisor, last week. I just want to say she's very well aware of our key initiatives and issues within Trinity County. I know that she had met beginning, I think, last year, maybe it was even before that, Jill, with you. But as she reached out saying as Chair, I would like to meet with you, and I think she's continuing to meet with you as well. And that's why in part perhaps she's so informed, but she is, she is very well aware of our issues. We discussed specifically the Minersville Boat Ramp, a Trinity Lake Trail Proposal and a variety of fuels, forest management projects and the Marina on Trinity Lake. And so we will be meeting regularly and I'll continue to provide updates. And then I just wanted to acknowledge also for PSA Two, I joined Supervisor Cox for that. And she was unanimously reelected as the Chair of the Executive Board. So we have great representation in that organization. Okay, with that, I think it is probably time for a break. Well, let's do the, we'll just do this quickly. Report from AdHocs, so Supervisor Fraser, all I have is that we have a meeting coming up. We have not met since the last board meeting for the cannabis ordinance updates. And we will be meeting later this month to pick up where we left off. And we are allowing more time in between meetings for basically more work to be done instead of just more time discussing it. Tribal relations?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, let's take a 10 minute break. That'll be 10:47. All right, Ashley, let us know when you're ready. We're ready? Okay, thank you. We're coming back to the public portion of the meeting. Before we move into consent calendar, Supervisor Cox has something.
I do. I would like to get board consensus if we could. I'm quite taken by our public comment that there is concern over our District Five election and maps that have been used. I'm not sure what that means. But I would like to get board consensus for staff to look into that and for us to understand what that means, if we could.
Would you like, I'm just wondering if we should be more specific, like at the April 2nd meeting, have a report about it, or how would you like us to, or just?
Yeah, whoever has the best idea of the best way to handle getting all the information, understanding the facts, and to see if there was a difference indeed between the way '22 was run versus '24. I don't understand why a different map would be used, but I think that we should be informed.
Okay, board feedback?
Yes, I would like, I am in agreement with Jill or Supervisor Cox.
It wasn't just District Five.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, we need to.
Okay, so it looks like there is board consensus, and I guess what I would say, Liz, is direction to staff is to bring this back to the board at the April 2nd meeting, if possible, if not, as soon as possible afterwards. And that it, I guess what I'm hearing Jill is an accounting for the kind of concerns and the clarification about any differences between the way that the 2022 election and the 2024 election were conducted. Is that what you were pretty much saying?
Yeah, although in '22 to '24, it would be just different districts that were involved, but it would be the process, right? It would be the maps.
Until the map should be.
She just meant different districts were up for election, but still the same mapping system.
Correct, right.
Okay, all right. Have you got that, Liz?
Any associated costs with this?
I mean, stop time.
If you rerun elections, there would be.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just wondering, yeah, obviously, that's going to be a ton. I'm just wondering.
And just for the clarification, this issue was raised last time, and the question was raised to the election official to confirm the maps. They reached out to RCD who does our maps for us, and they confirmed that the correct maps had been used. So we would likely want to obtain those maps from RCD and provide those to show the board what was utilized.
Thank you.
Maybe that would give the peace of mind we're looking for.
Okay, next item is consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately, and we will open for public comment about the consent calendar.
Hi, my name is Eric Anderson, and I am making comment on item 3.11, a Department of Transportation agreement with the hangar leases. And my comment has to do, the hangar lease in the summary of the discussion of what is on the, on the calendar here includes a 50% increase in the rates for hangers. It's 14 cents per square foot to 21 cents per square foot, which when it's per square foot and it's 14 cents doesn't sound like much, but it's really, for my hangar, goes from $186 a month up to $279 a month. Also in this is a inflation correction, and it's based on the San Francisco-Oakland Hayward area, kind of an odd consumer price index, and I think that should be discussed, and I would recommend a national consumer price index. And I would finish by saying I don't mind paying inflation correction, but I think the 50% increase is a lot, and that should be discussed, and I think that's, that's more than it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on consent calendar in the room? Online. Okay. So are there board members who would like to pull items?
No, I'll pull 3.11.
Okay.
What was that?
She, she is following up on that comment and pulling 3.11. Okay, I would also like to pull 3.15, 3.16, and 3.17. And I will entertain a motion for approval of the remaining items on the consent calendar.
I would move to approve all items on the consent calendar minus 3.11, 15, 16, and 17.
Second.
Supervisor Fraser? Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Lou Wyler?
Aye. Okay, so item 3.11. Approve the updated hangar lease agreement and the safety and security maintenance modifications for Trinity County airports. No fiscal impact. Which I guess that in and of itself, if we're raising rates, does have a fiscal impact?
Not a negative impact.
Not a negative impact. Okay, and thank you for that clarification. Okay, so is, does the board have, do we have somebody that wants to present this as Director Kokas online? Okay?
Yes, he is.
Yeah, feel free to go ahead and make a presentation. We'll ask board questions and then public comment.
Okay, my presentation is going to be rather brief. The last time we had set rates for the hangers was back in 2014, I believe, at a 14 cents a square foot. And that was rather low, but that's besides the point. We looked at different hangar rates, and as I sent to the airport advisory committee a spreadsheet in the area showing the average hangar rate would be about 21 to 22 cents per square foot for hangers without electricity, and close to 27 cents per square foot to those hangers that have electricity. And it may sound like this is a 50% increase, however, two times 14, it's 28, not 20, so it's not 50% increase. It's a little less than that. But we're just bringing it up to the current hangar rates, the 20 cents per square foot. The other part is we looked at the cost of living, and the best one that we could find that's fairly complete is the one for the San Francisco Bay Area, and that's fairly reflective of what's going on in the rest of the state. There is not a cost of living index for the north counties, so we cannot use that. The cost of living in Chicago and in Minnesota are quite different than the ones in California, so we chose to choose the, choose the one for the San Francisco-based area. The rest of it is, we're making some minor changes to make sure that we only have airworthy aircraft, and if somebody again complains about the prices, they need to look at the cost of the storage facilities in Weaverville, which they range from 47 to 67 cents per square foot, and I think some of our hangers are used to store furniture or old automobiles. So with this agreement and this item, we like to make sure that those hangers are used strictly for flight-worthy airplanes in order for us to keep the designation as a basic airport. Basic airport means the only one that we have basic, it's a Trinity Center. It means that we're eligible to receive federal loans or federal grants, free money, to do improvements to the airport. We're also trying to see if we can get enough airplanes in the Weaverville Airport so that can qualify as a basic airport, so we can get federal grants to make improvements to that airport. And that's my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
Yeah, Panos is Liam. Of the hangers that are available right now at the Weaverville Airport, how many of those are being currently used as for airplanes?
I do not know exactly how many, however, I heard rumors that there are one or two that they have furniture in them, and one or two that they have airplanes that are not flight-worthy. In order for us to qualify, we need to have flight-worthy airplanes that they are at that hangar for at least six months and one day. And we do have a waiting line for people to get hangers in Weaverville.
And how many hangers are there total?
Weaverville, I believe there are nine.
So half of them are basically being used for storage?
I don't know how, if they're half, but I heard there are one or two they use to store furniture or airplanes that they're not flying. Or airplanes that are ultralights, which do not qualify.
His numbers about how many hangers were being used in different ways probably also includes Trinity Center Airport and others. Any other questions for Director Kokas? Okay, so we will now take public comments on this matter.
Okay, I have an airplane. It's at Trinity Center, and I understand from Panos's comments that he did a survey of hangers and so on. I'm just, I used to live in the Bay Area. I lived there for 20 years, and I recognize the Bay Area is a very expensive place. Consumer Price Index for the Bay Area is probably going to be much more than the rest of the state. It's, in part, the expense of the Bay Area is why I moved away. So I'm not sure using a Consumer Price Index for the, for the Bay Area is the most appropriate way. I looked at inflation going from 2014 to the most recent year, and that would be about 30% more for what we would be paying, not 50% more. And as another, I used to have my airplane at Concord. I did not have a hangar there. It was tied down, but I looked at what Concord is paying for tie downs. When I left in 2013, I paid $60 a month, and I looked online. They're paying $80 a month now, roughly 33% increase. So somehow, a 50% increase seems a lot to me, and 30% increase seems like something that keeps up with inflation. And so I guess those are my comments about the rate. There are some details, and, you know, when you sign a lease, you quickly go over all of this stuff and so on, and, but some of the, the sentences and verbiages could be interpreted pretty narrowly, like, you're only supposed to have enough oil or something for one service of your airplane. So when you buy a case of oil, is that too much? I just, you know, the devil's in the details of some of these things, and I, I don't want to raise too big a point about that, but I do think the big increase in price is, is something not at least making sense to me. Thank you.
So I have a question?
Yes. Public comment, we're really not supposed to engage. Thank you.
I guess my question is, is that if your airplane is being repaired by an AMP mechanic, which is special license from the federal government, do we have one in Weaverville? Do you have to import one to work on the airplane? So if you have an unusable airplane and a hangar being fixed, then there's a reason why it's there, because you don't want it out in the parking lot.
Thank you. For me?
Perhaps our DOT could respond to the.
If you, if you have questions for him, I just think, you know, we're.
I do. I have a question.
In the middle of a public comment, though.
Let's, do we have any public comment online?
I have no raise to him.
Okay, go ahead. If you have questions.
I'm, I'm just curious. I, I'm sorry that I don't know the, the square footage of the hangers, but with the new rate increase, what would the monthly fee be for, say, one of the hangers in Weaverville or Trinity Center?
So he stated that in his original public comment that it was one.
You're talking about the.
Not per square footage, but in total.
But, but yeah, what is, if you look at the average size of the hangar, then what does that translate into?
Yes.
Yeah. So Director Kokas, if you're online?
I know he said 21 cents, I think, the first.
It went from 186 to 279.
Again, it depends on the size of the hangar. It went from 159 to 170 to 230, 250, something like it. And then we have two different rates. One, it's proposed for non-electrically, the one that does not have electricity, which is 20 cents per square foot, and the one with electricity, about 21 cents per square foot, in order for us to make up for the electricity that we are paying.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I missed that on the first go.
So.
Director Kokas, I would like to ask, so when we did our fee study some time ago, and we found that our rates, not just looking at airports, but in all of the areas of the county, were substantially below what they should have been for many years, and bringing them up to what they need to be was, was significant, and it, it impacted a lot of people because we had been so far beneath for so long. So my question to you would be those 2014 rates, when this looks like a 50% inflationary rate where it's being argued that 30% might be more appropriate to a cost of living index, my question is to do with that 2014 rate as a baseline. Do you feel that that was below par, or that was correct, and we really are looking at kind of closer to 50% rather than 30?
Actually, I just handed a note, my staff, it's great. Our current, one of our hangers without electricity, it's 1137 square feet. It rents at 159. It's going to go up to 227.40, and that's about a 25% increase.
So. The, the, I'm, I'm just doing the math here. So if you're starting, if our starting point from 2014, as referenced in the document, is 14 cents per square foot, and the proposal is 20, 50% of .14 is .7, which would take it to .21. So it's not quite 50%, but it's much more than 30%. So I'm, I'm, we've got a lot of different numbers flowing around here, but the, the ones that are shared here is, is probably about a 45%, 47% increase.
My original question hasn't been answered yet, though. Do you feel like the 2014 rates were accurate or appropriate for that time to where the delta just looks like 50%, but there was an original lift to something that was appropriate, and then it might be more of a 30% cost of living overall?
Again, I don't know how accurate were the 2014 rates. When we looked at similar airports, and I had a spreadsheet for about 10 or 15 airports in the area throughout the valley, and none of them are in the Bay Area. They're in Fresno, they're in Modesto, in Tracy, Willets, and so forth. The average was 21 or 22 cents per square foot, and I'm using those numbers to come up with a new ones for Trinity.
And that was an average from study of what?
In 2023.
For, but I'm, but I'm sorry, for California hangers, or?
For California hangers, and I can look it up right now, and I can tell you the area was done in 2023. It's Modesto, Oakdale, Stockton, Tracy, Los Panos, Fresno, Yuba County, Auburn, Redding, Little River, Fall River, Garberville, and Willets. And the average was actually 22 cents the ones without electricity, and we chose to go to 20 cents.
Okay.
And those are their current rates, what they're charging in 2023.
So the gentleman that was speaking about his hangar and his airplane, the difference between 40. The difference between fourteen cents per square foot and twenty cents per square foot is much under, if I'm doing my math right, fifty percent, which you had mentioned a few times. And I'm not sure what, where you were getting that at, or am I reading it wrong?
So in the discussion, uh, it's currently fourteen cents and I have electricity, so I go up to twenty-one. That's where I got my numbers. So that's fifty percent. That's another.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we're, could you direct a question to him? Because we can't do that. So I'm sorry, we we just, we're just trying to follow the rules and if you engage with one, then you have to engage with others. So I'm just trying to be consistent. So is there a question for?
Nope.
Okay. So uh, in the, for what it's worth category here, I just did a Google search aviation consumer in two thousand eight said lease costs are currently twenty cents per square foot per year. I don't, I haven't dug deep to know what their frame of reference that was just the source aviation consumer. So other questions for um staff?
Well, is staff seeing that point four, point one four percent doubled is not point two percent?
Are you, are you asking their their disagreement with the fifty percent?
I lost my math wrong.
It is, it is like a forty-seven percent increase.
I don't even think it's that high. Is it forty-seven percent?
Well, half of fourteen is seven, so that would be the, you know, if you multiply point one four times fifty percent, to be a fifty percent increase, that'd be points seven, which would take it to point two one, and it's going to point two oh.
Okay.
If you did, if you did a forty percent against the point one four, it would be forty-four point six, ten cents? Yeah, I'm, I can do the fifty percent. Yes, ma'am. Looks like you had something to say? Okay. So are you, you're still trying to just make sure what percent increase is?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll get out my calculator.
My thinking, my slow brain thinking would be point one four doubled would be point two eight.
Would be a hundred percent increase.
I mean, that's what I, that's what I meant. So he's going up to basically what we're asking here. Plus point, less than a penny.
There's a forty-two point eight percent increase.
Yeah.
Forty-two point eight percent.
Forty-two point eight.
On non-electric and it would be fifty percent un-electrified.
Yeah, to twenty-one. Got it. All right, that that's what I was getting at. So we're not at fifty percent, although with his electric hangar, he is at twenty-one percent.
He would, well, he would be a.
Twenty-one per square foot.
It'd be twenty-one cents, which would be a fifty percent increase.
Got it.
So I think unless we have other questions, that we should entertain a motion to have discussion.
We move to approve as presented.
I will second that.
Okay.
Um, I think that when we are looking at, it it's a little misleading to say it's the San Francisco Oakland Hayward area when we see by further detail that it included places like Fall River, Garberville and Willets. And knowing that our costs here um can be higher um than what you can find in a city cost to uh upkeep and maintain, it seems appropriate to me and so I support uh as presented.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that um I I have seen the hangars full of things other than airplanes. And I I do know that that has kind of been um a a a point of conflict uh for the folks that do keep them solely for their airplanes. And again, you know, that there's a, there's a bit of 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 an issue there. So hopefully um we can um have the the funding available now to help address some of those issues and see all of our airplane, all of our airports upgraded and ready for use.
And and I would add, as I forgot to earlier, this is not a recommendation, not just coming from staff, but from the Airport Advisory Commission, which um uh I believe Mr. Anderson is part of. Attend. Um, so these discussions have been had. We have looked at the um mishandling of the contents of our hangars, which have been, I would say grossly mismanaged over the last few years and I appreciate. Um, it has been uh not just Director Kokas who has taken it seriously, but um the Advisory Commission as well um have agreed. We've got a waiting list of people who want to get in and um. And so again, it it really has been quite vetted around the table of discussion.
I think there are, I I don't know that the specific rates were vetted in those committee meetings, but the.
Numbers were not correct.
Yeah, but I I also echo at those airport advisory committee meetings that uh as Director Kokas pointed out, we cannot get federal funding now that we could get if we get our act in order with these hangars only being used for uh uh airworthy aircraft, I think is the terminology we're using. Uh, there's no question that our airports need more maintenance and that even with these increases, the rates are less than basically getting a a normal temporary storage unit. And which is part of the why people have been using it for temporary storage units. So I think that there's a number of things that are positive here. I think if anything that we could um ask for um staff, you know, approve, but ask for staff to take another look at the inflation rate aspect of it to say, you know, if if we're going to go forward tied to something, is that the right thing to be tied to? And maybe it is and it's your motion, so you leave it as or you can adjust for them to revisit.
Um, I'm comfortable with the rate. I think if there was direction to staff, I would like, um, if there is discomfort in the uh amount of clarity as to what you can store there. Um, people do need to be certain, can I store just one change of oil or as I buy a case? Do I have to have a different storage area for that? Um. So I I would add that to my motion.
Do you second that?
While we're in this discussion phase, I would like to raise one question and um that would be of what is the enforcement mechanism for that? I mean, uh, what are we going to do with the aircrafts that are already in hangars that are not airworthy? And what are we? Is is the county going to take it upon ourself to remove those? Or are they still going to sit there and just pay a higher rate? That um that would be a question I would like to have answered.
Director Kokas?
Yes, uh, like I say, my staff report, you're going to give everyone a thirty-day grace period, if longer if needed. Uh, and if not, we're going to proceed with legal action to see what is the process of us removing their materials. Uh, county council will be able to advise us how to proceed uh further if someone is not cooperating. And there are methods of uh getting the material off. If they don't want to do it, we'll give them notices and we'll proceed according to the law.
Do we know what the fees are for Benton Airport in Reading?
Random. Okay, for electric hangars, they're about uh one eighty-four.
One eight-four, you said?
Yes, and that's ha- nine hundred and sixty-five square feet. And that's about twenty-four cents a square foot. Uh, sorry, that's the average for that area, not for that one.
So the the average for the area of Reading is twenty-four cents a square foot versus the proposed twenty or twenty-one? Is that correct?
One eighty-four for a nine hundred and sixty-five square foot uh hangar for Benton Airport. And two sixty-nine for uh nine sixty-six to twelve hundred square feet. Our hangars are close to uh eleven hundred and thirty-seven square feet.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye. Thank you. Item three point one five. Adopt a resolution which approves the sale of tax defaulted properties subject to the tax collector's power of sale. Fiscal impact is dependent upon sales.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. The item we have for you is to adopt a resolution to approve a property, delinquent property tax sale. So just for a little bit of history, the way this works is that a property must be delinquent with property taxes for over five years before they would become eligible for sale. Sorry. And we send multiple notices throughout the year to make individuals aware that there are delinquent property taxes. We also send them notices of different programs that are available to them. Up until the point they become power to sell, they are eligible to set up an installment plan with this to take care of those property taxes. So these, the properties that are listed here have not done so, or they have defaulted on installment plans that they have. So with that, if you have any questions for me?
Any questions? I I will acknowledge that I asked a number of questions over the weekend and got some very prop answers, which I appreciate. And I just want to to share a little bit of that for the public and for board is that there are multiple attempts at outreach, home visits. Uh, there are attempts to share information about programs that are available that can pay those property taxes on behalf of the property owner, some of which can just be forgiven and some of which are recouped at the time that the property is sold. Um, so there's a number of options available to individuals and that um and and I, again, I was very pleased to hear that there was really special effort to to try to make sure that every uh possible solution was provided, including payment plans and so forth. And that uh basically the fifty-five properties we see here on this list is actually not even the complete list. Uh, but it was also interesting to note that in general, what happens is that once this is approved and we get close to the sale date, then suddenly a majority, vast majority, it sounds like historically looking, do end up paying.
Historically, about ninety percent. And so if when someone is, even if this is approved, they technically have up until the close of business prior to the day before the sale to take care of this.
And I think you pointed out that uh the cost of carrying that delinquent tax is at a one and a half percent interest rate?
Yes, so some people use this as a low interest rate loan and so they wait to pay their taxes because they're only paying one and a half percent interest.
So I I started at this with just trying, again, always to seek first to understand and to be understood. But I I was basically concerned, are we doing everything we can because of hearing about some of these programs are available? And why aren't these people taking advantage? And and now I'm kind of on the scale of, wow, we're bending over backwards. There's programs available. People, not all, uh, some could be basically using the county government as their bank and getting a one and a half percent loan for five years. And so I am, I I have my answers. I shouldn't say anything about my feelings about it, like we get to a motion on the table.
We utilize multiple services also. So in the event that we have someone that we do not have a correct mailing address for, we notify contiguous property owners. If we have a relative, we notify them. We have multiple notices that'll be taking place, that have taken place in the paper and that will take place in the paper prior to the actual sale.
And those all cost as well to put the the paper notifications.
The pu- the, I would say that the the local paper, that's pretty costly, so, but we have requirements to the state for, it has to be published.
Thank you for all your efforts. Uh, any other questions? A motion?
If to approve is presented.
I will second.
Any further discussion?
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
I had a discussion.
Oh, sorry, I thought I was going to say one.
I would be interested in in uh having just further discussion on how do we prevent people from utilizing us as a as a bank for one point five percent interest? How do we, the 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 bulk of the the work is is on us over these, you know, scenarios? And and if folks are performing in the last moment to bring these up to date, then I want, how, do you have a just, well, this is probably too vague of a question, but like, what's the average cost for putting one of these properties through this process? What, how much does it cost the county to do this for this final hour payment? In addition to carrying the weight of not having these funds in our accounts?
Just the cost of the sale, I would say is like um probably at least minimum a few thousand dollars in addition to all the staff time involved. We do everything that we possibly can, including we've here, probably about maybe a year or so ago. We also set something up so that individuals that um maybe disciplining themselves to put money aside for taxes can be a challenge. So we, there's an option now for those that don't have lenders involved that want to have an impound account so they can set that up and they can make monthly payments and the payments will come timely. So we try to, we educate, educates, uh, the education, educating people is really important to us and we try. We have pamphlets, we do everything we can when we send out notices. There's a, I keep saying this over and over and in my my notice and my reports to you all that there is still a pot of money that is not being utilized. So if you are aware of someone that has delinquent taxes, if you can please share that because they keep increasing the limit. I mean, they are willing to pay up to eighty thousand dollars um of delinquent taxes. And this pot of money is something that can um could assist a lot of people. So it's basically there till it's gone and it's not a lot of, we've had several people that have taken advantage of that for our county. But there's still, there's still more money available and that's money that does not have to be paid back.
And that's set aside through a program of eligibility?
There is um criteria for that. And so basically that one was as a result of COVID. So those that were affected that had an impact from COVID, that they will also pay their mortgage as well. So if they had a mortgage and also property taxes, they'll pay both.
I I appreciate the the effort, I do. Um, I know people who have been very near and dear to me before, who've been in a delinquent tax state. And and it is difficult. It is hard. Sometimes it gets more than what you can do. And I am so grateful that there's the ability to pay portions now rather than all or nothing. I think that's really helpful. With all that being said, um, I I do feel like we have to be good stewards of the county's financial situation as well. Um, we're constantly in conversations about we don't have the ability to do for for the county and the people as a whole. I would just be interested in finding out how we could reduce the cost of this instead of waiting for that final hour, how we can maybe make this folks pay faster. I don't know if there's, it it's hard because then if someone's really truly in a bad place and you add more fees and you add more fines, then you're just grinding them into the ground further and further. However, it is important sometimes to, for for other folks who are using us as a low interest loan to say, no, that's not going to work anymore. So finding that that space where we are giving due diligence, I think, is important.
I can say before I took office, they were not holding tax sales regularly. Uh, when I did start conducting those regularly initially, so you you the, you default, it's July first, our beginning of our fiscal year. So we had hundreds of parcels and then when I began having the tax sales regularly, that number dropped way down because and people also, it's it's really truly the act of of starting this process that the majority will redeem because people see in the paper, they call their neighbor, their cousins or their kids or whoever it is that can help these individuals. And so usually, usually, like I said, typically it's about ninety percent that are redeemed prior to actually going to sell.
And could we be confident that those, the ninety percent aside, those ten percent who are in desperate need, can we be confident that in the outreach to them, this eighty thousand dollar pot of money has been suggested as a means by which they could redeem as well?
I've I've already done that multiple times, but I also do make um personal visits. I actually go out with the sheriff and we visit the properties and we talk to the homeowners and I provide them with all that information when I make those site visits as well.
Thank you. And thank you for that effort.
Okay, I I I just would echo, I I really was impressed to hear all the efforts on your part and I appreciate that you're, yes, of course, you're trying to collect the taxes, but you're also trying to protect homeowners' interests and and it's a, it's a great balancing act that you're doing and I just appreciate the special effort.
I just might add that the the purpose of a of a tax sale, I don't want to displace anyone. And it's the purpose of that is to return a property back to a revenue generating status. It is not to make a profit. It is not to displace anyone. So we really try to do that outreach to, you know, I've got a great team and they're 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 preaching that the program. And so we've had quite a few people.
I would support Supervisor Carpenter Harris's encouragement to find ways to de-incentivize people to be in this position. Uh, if you have some creative thoughts on that in the future, not like a formal direction to staff from my perspective, but um I would imagine those ideas spin around in your head from time to time.
Agreed. Okay, now we can call for the vote.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Luth Weller?
Aye. Item 3.16, thank you. For item 3.16, approve SB 964 letter of opposition unless amended. And the reason I pulled this is that the actual letter was not in our backup material. So I, I believe, County Council, do I need to read this letter since it wasn't in backup material?
Read it. Just needs to be made available. If there's copies made available and then we'll post it online as part of the agenda.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate you saving me from reading that. Any questions? Staff for the side? And did you want to present anything?
I just might add that this is something that they're placing additional burdens back on the county. And historically, this was something that the state did. And due to the way it was handled, they passed this back off to the county and now they're looking to there's a multi-impact, I would say, on the counties. The time that they're asking for, they're asking us to provide legal advice, which we should not be doing, especially if there's a monetary gain. There are several problems that we have with this. And so we are urging, we have quite a few different agencies and affiliations that we're a part of that we are all urging them all to oppose this unless they're amending it. It's not of a service to the counties or to the taxpayers.
Thank you. And I will say that while the letter was not attached, for those that, that took the time to read the backup materials, the, the reasons given for the letter are basically what's in the letter. So it's just a administrative error that we're dealing with at this point. Okay. Without any other questions, then we'll open it for public comment. Any online?
I have no raised hands.
And we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion?
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Luth Weller?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Item 3.17, which is under Trinity County Transportation Commission, adopt resolutions of concurrence to approve Caltrans District 2 State Route 3 corridor plan, no impact to general fund. And, and I will just mention, the reason I pulled this is I did want to, first of all, acknowledge that Director Kokas worked very responsibly with Caltrans representatives to get the input that had been provided by members of the community and by the board during the last time we heard this. And those are reflected in this new document. The one thing that isn't yet included is that the tribal representation part and, but there is acknowledgement and there has been outreach. And they, Caltrans has agreed that when they hear back from tribal representatives, they will incorporate their information into the document. So they're just asking if we would approve this absent that, knowing that they will accept that when it comes in.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everyone.
Yes. Thank you for that.
Okay. So Director Kokas, is there anything else you wanted to present about that?
No, you have presented everything. We're waiting for the tribe to get back to Caltrans and then Caltrans should revise their document to include the information requested.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Public comment?
Public comment.
Sorry. Thank you. Public comment.
I have no raised hands.
Okay. Entertain a motion now.
I'll move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Any discussion? We'll call the vote.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Luth Weller?
Aye. Thank you. Is everybody good to continue? Don't need a break? So under county matters, these items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Is there anyone that would like to hear an item out of order?
I had asked earlier, but I guess I request.
We're good? Okay. There was potential for moving one, but we will continue as it is listed. So under Board of Supervisors, item 4.1, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending Trinity County Code Section 15.25 pertaining to limited density rural dwellings, no fiscal impact.
Good morning, Chair and Board. So the ordinance amendment in front of you today is for Section 15.25, which sets the standards for structures that qualify under a limited density building permit. This request was originally started from Supervisor Dan Frazier in order to reduce the parcel size to increase the availability of parcels within Post Mountain to apply for this. I would like to state that all but one parcel in Post Mountain is one acre or more. There is one parcel that's point six something. So this ordinance first went to the Planning Commission on November 9th, and then it went back a second time to request and incorporate comments from safety and construction related agencies such as CAL FIRE, Fire Chiefs Association, Trinity OES, Building and Environmental Health. From this process, we had a lot of productive conversations with these agencies in order to write language in this amendment that all parties could agree on. And a lot of deference on, on staff's part was referred to the requirements related to public health and safety standards regarding fire protection and minimum environmental health standards. The board backup describes the three major amendments that the Planning Commission and staff recommended as part of this process. All agencies that commented on this were invited to this meeting. And Cody and I are here if you guys have any questions that we can help with.
Thank you. Any questions for?
I'm going to have some, but I think I can wait. Some of my questions will probably be more directed toward County Council. And also I'll have some, some input that I think I'll wait till after we hear public comment.
Okay. Did you have questions?
After public comment as well.
Thank you. We'll take public comment now.
And Chair, I want to thank Danny for putting this forward. I think it is a, a good ordinance. I think it helps a lot of people in a time when housing is hard to do. So I want to thank you. And I want to also ask though, if this is extended beyond Post Mountain or was this, is this just for Post Mountain or is this for the whole of?
All that will be addressed later.
Will be. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. Been following this for a long time. I'm, I'm happy to see the amendments coming forward. I, I was at what can only be described as a remarkable Planning Commission meeting that discussed this. Really great conversation resulting in these amendments. Particularly from a newly constituted commission, that meeting. I, I think they did a great job. I think they sent you a good package here and I'd urge you to approve this. I do think it's appropriate, especially when we think about Post Mountain, but as far as the zoning, I, I like how we use zoning in this. I feel like this, and I use the term scheme in, in the most positive senses, this mechanism reflects a lot of learning over the years of some of our ordinance making. So again, I, I think it's, it's great. I like the amendments that the Planning Commission sent forward. I think it finds that kind of neutral position that everybody can live with. So anyway, I'd urge you to approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room? Online?
John?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to encourage approval as presented. This item has been diligently shepherded through this entire process for I think over eight years by Supervisor Frazier. And there's been endless discussion about this over that time and public input. Stakeholder comments and on and on and on. And I think these amendments really are very thoughtful and, and do a good job of, of that important balance in Trinity County. So again, thank you, Dan, for seeing this through and I would say approve as written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Hi, Jeff Caddella, Xenia. Yeah, I'd just like to support this amendment to an already really good ordinance. It's important that these ordinances help the people that need it the most. And Post Mountain is one of those places. And I appreciate anything that makes our ordinances more efficient and streamlined and actually help the people that they're meant to help. So please, please support this amendment. Thanks.
I have no other raised hands.
Okay. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I will second.
All right.
Discussion.
Out comes the fun part. I do have some, I don't know, we call them questions, concerns, what in this staff report, the purpose? Or it calls out that the reason, well, number one, I appreciate taking the credit for this, but the board directed this to go to the Planning Commission. So it wasn't just me. The, the Board of Supervisors did make that determination, but in here where it says this was proposed to allow parcels under five acres in size with access to municipal sewer and water. That was exactly opposite of what the proposal was. My original proposal that I'd asked the board to consider was what parcels without municipal services would be eligible and below five acres. So one, and that's the question I have with probably for County Council is how can we better get to the area if the Board of Supervisors is has a proposal, how do we better present that to the Planning Commission instead of me playing telephone with Bella and both of us coming off looking less than perfect? How can we do a better job of presenting these things with the Board of Supervisors working more closely with staff to actually get everything? How it is proposed?
The, the very good question and very timely as well because Emma's had, came up to discuss this with me during one of the breaks. In terms of making sure that we, when we are getting direction from staff, it has to go back to planning or, I mean, from the board that has to go back to planning or the board that has to go back to staff, making sure we have a better way to articulate and codify the exact language we're looking for. And so we would, we will be talking and when Trent gets back, I would like to include him in this conversation about looking at doing resolutions and have it be more in writing so that when we send it back, it's, it's very clear and written out versus what we've been doing, which while legal is not as effective, which is we're using minute orders, we're just using what staff can take down and as fast as we can take it down. So that is one of the things we'll look at because we are noticing that as well. And, and I appreciate Bella, you know, bringing it up even before you did. So.
I, I mean, I'm not, nothing against Bella. I know I've worked with Bella on this project, but it's just, it, it's difficult when things don't go quite perfectly as planned. And then, so I just want to, that's one thing I would like to, in the future, have a way to, if the board wants to work with staff, either we send somebody to sit down with Bella and craft it or, or we have it written out what we want. So we don't put that strain on Bella where she has to try to get inside my brain because it's not going to work.
Scary place.
Do you want me to respond?
If, if you would like to respond, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I think your count of it is fairly accurate. It was kind of like a picking through your brain, trying to figure it out. And I sent legal ads over to try to make sure it was the right one. But I would like to preface too, that in the end, we could have the, you know, an agreement on the words, but the Planning Commission could make a different recommendation and use different language, which is actually what happened here.
Yeah. And that, the, the, I, I understand that. It's just getting, if we could work closer, it's like even at the, to the point where the board can give you some, if, if, and I'm not just saying this for me, for this thing, but anything the board's directing you to present, they should give you the argument they want you to present instead of leaving you out there to try to figure it out on your own. And that's, I think, what happened here.
Yeah, it definitely wastes efforts.
I, I gave Bella an idea and then just threw her out to the wolves and she had no idea what was actually the desire of myself or the board or whatever to present. So I think we need to do a better job of that in the future.
As I recommended to Margaret, I think like an itemized list in the resolution would, would make it clear. And then if anything happens and on a staff level or anything, the record is there from day one and we know where to carry it through. Thank you for bringing that up.
No problem. And then since we got through the preliminary part, I do want to jump into some of the recommendations a little bit and we'll probably end up bringing Cody into these discussions, I would imagine. I'm fine with the, the first recommendation. I, I didn't in my proposal to the board, I didn't put an acre minimum on it. I just said by zoning and then so the, the one acre, it doesn't really matter because that's basically the size of the smallest parcel you can utilize. The fire safety requirement section, I do have some concern with that. And not because of anything that we have going right now, but because I've noticed that when you tie yourself to state code, state code can change. And so if we are, we establishing that it's state code as of today, or are we just tying ourselves to state code, which could change tomorrow and completely nullify all the work we've done in this ordinance? That's a concern I have there. And then in the amending the period of time that people can come into compliance with this, I think that there was some lack in our original ordinance of language. Because I know in the discussions we had and in some of the original drafts of our ordinance, which I read the one that was that's actually codified, I read it several times. In some of the original drafts, there were in parentheses in some of these spots, except existing structures. And that's what this, this section was for originally was because there are specific guidelines in this ordinance that says you can only have, we'll pick the easy one, one and a half stories. If somebody has a house that's two stories, that was what this exception part was intended for in the original drafting was that if somebody had, say, a house that was two stories or a house that had a 512 pitch on the roof, we weren't going to make them take the top half of their house off or change the roof pitch. It would have been at the discretion of the building official that yes, this is, we'll, we'll make this work and they'll sign it off. So as far as the three years or five years to come into compliance, if they're compliant with this code, they can come into compliance at any point in time. The way I understand it, you would just have to become compliant, which would mean you'd have to pay your permit cost. So I'm actually in favor of keeping So I'm actually in favor of keeping this restriction a little tighter to try to make the people who are almost compliant come in. My question then to probably county council, maybe to Cody also would be, how can we craft wording that would make it clear what's, what this exemption section or exception section would be for? To allow people who almost meet these requirements to come in under these requirements at the discretion of our building official? That, and can we change that language today without creating a need to go back to the planning commission?
I can answer the second question first, which is this issue was directly brought up and addressed by the planning commission. So you are welcome to take their recommendations or modify them at this level without taking it back. So you are looking to modify the specific language to keep the timeframe closer to what it was, what it is currently, but allow some discretion for the building official to come back and extend that based on significant compliance.
Well, no, it wouldn't be to extend it, but to, to utilize that for its intended purpose, which would be basically, I think in our original draft, it was written in, you might have it somewhere on your computer, under the one and a half story requirement, it said, accept existing structures. And then I, I don't know, but if it was in there, but I know that the discussion had been around roof pitch for existing structures that weren't perfectly compliant, but they've already been standing for enough years that Cody should be able to make a determination whether or not they're a safe structure and to allow those people to come in without penalty. So I don't know if we can fix that language without a lot of finessing and talking with Cody, but that, I know that was the original intent. Then like if we can answer that one, then I go on to some of my other questions.
So in reading it, the way it's currently written, it is, it is very broad in terms of how it's stated, existing structures should be eligible for a permit under this chapter without penalty for a period of three years after the adopting of the ordinance. So if we're going to go back in there and put any caveats to that, I would, I would defer to planning, but I would think we would want some time to make sure we, we don't miss any potential holes.
Oh, the, the only, the only language that I would consider adding to that would be at the discretion of the building official. So that would give Cody, or in the future, when Cody's retired, it would give the building official the, the authority to, to make a determination of the, whether or not, well, in three years, Cody better not be retired, so.
Planning sake, the only thing that I need clarification there, that all of that is up to the discretion of the board, but I would want clarification on whether this grace period starts after the adoption of this amendment or starts after the original adoption. So I just would want that to be clear.
We would just have to make that clear in our, in our motion.
That's all requests I would have.
And that's whether we deal with this at the discretion or not, you're just looking for a timeframe clarity.
So implementation is easier.
And help me understand Supervisor Frazier, the, the, the call that you're asking for the building official discretion, is, is it those examples, like you said, there's a two-story existing structure and you, and you want the official to have the discretion to say, okay, we're not going to make you tear down part of your.
Yeah, that, that, that's where, but then at the same time, he would have the ability, if it's a, if the second story is two by six walls framed on top of two by fours, he would have the ability to say, no, we're not going to be able to do this unless you do this, this, and this. So it would give our building official the ability to do his job, but then also allow people that don't perfectly fit to come in. And the grace period was basically directed to, okay, let's get people to come in. We need to have an end date. We've had that discussion in cannabis ad hoc several times. If you don't have an end date, you don't have any enforcement. So that was the original intent anyway of that section.
And I guess while we're at that, to address Bella's question, did you already have a conceptual approach to the timing of that three years?
I, I don't.
It originally started that the date that this was adopted. I don't have a problem with starting over. Cody has something to say.
So the, the biggest thing that I got to is so when it got adopted, it still hadn't even hit the website yet. It hadn't really been promoted that, hey, we've got this because there was a lot of questions with council as to how we were supposed to adhere to a lot of things that we had. So I personally don't think it'd be a good idea to go from the date that we adopted because it's not really fair to the folks that want to come in because we didn't actually have that act of giving them the opportunity to do it. So if we could, I mean, I know the date that I put it online and it hit the computer that we were actually accepting applications, we could use that. Or if it'd be better to say, hey, we're going to kind of reset that date, I also don't have a problem with that. My main goal out of this whole thing is to bring everybody into compliance. I don't, I don't want to prohibit anybody from coming in here. If you can meet these minimum things to get you in the door, that's the intent of it. So, and if we do have situations too, because there's a lot of stuff in there that does say kind of at the discretion of the building official. So I think there is opportunities there where if we do look at something and we say, hey, you know, it, it's kind of out of that realm, but maybe you got to get engineering to get in the door for that little bit of it. Or maybe, you know, we can change a little bit of your framing to get to that point that you want to be. For me, I want to try to get as many people in this as we can while still meeting, you know, your zoning requirements and the lot sizes. And that, that's the stuff I think is the big meat that we got to make sure you can meet. But I think if we can get them in the door and then we can kind of look at what they got, then we can kind of go from there.
And county council, if we were going to go by some basically new date, would it be better to be the date that ordinance takes effect? The date the board approves it, does it matter from your perspective?
It's your pleasure. And the other thing you could do is just put a date certain in there. I mean, you can say three years from April 1st, 2024. And that way there's no question.
Okay.
I would add that the planning commission seemed to want to extend that period, which is why they intentionally amended that when it wasn't even part of our original amendment. That was, that was their doing and, and planning supports building in their efforts as well. So if there was a delayed launch, I wasn't aware about that. If there was a delayed launch, then I think it's important to keep that in mind. And if this all goes smoothly today and it doesn't require another first reading, then April 2nd would be like the next meeting that we potentially could put this on the docket for, for the second reading. Just to keep that in mind for the date example.
If I could.
Yeah, go ahead and then we can come back to you.
Well, it's this, I would like you to not go forward with your other stuff because I have something on this topic. Is that okay? Okay. So with regard to that, my thought is, Cody, I'm not, I would have a question for you in a moment if I could. Since we are being more inclusive, if we drop the size of the parcel, it just seems logical to me that we would have a start date that starts over and that it would be 30 days from the date that we adopt the ordinance, because that's the date that it actually comes into effect. So that's just throwing my opinion out there. With regard to your statement here that you've said your goal and your hope is to bring all people into compliance. In the letter, that's the attachment nine in the packet. Your letter is encouraging this be applied only to new construction. So can you pair those for me?
So where that came along was because a lot of the fire stuff, like the draft stop, fire blocking, if you can't get into that, that's where it gets kind of tough. But my intent for that was more just for those ones that are less than the acre or the, if the one acre minimum. Because with that one acre minimum, my worry is that if we get too many people really close, I wanted to ensure that they could adhere to those fire standards. So if they can show that they've done that, like that they meet those standards, then I have no problem bringing somebody in. That's the biggest thing is just, and we could, maybe we need to reword that so that that makes a little more sense. But for me, more so is just making sure that we get those folks that are at that one acre can adhere to that fire stuff because that fire stuff for me is really important when we get to that smaller footprint.
Okay, clear, and I appreciate that. And so to that point, one of the comments I was going to make later is that I feel like that the, the verbiage in that section, the zero, the point zero four zero A, it just feels vague to me. It feels like it communicates intent without giving definite, you know, backstops to what is actually required. So in my opinion, it needs clarity. But I, I mean, I defer, I just think as I read it, it feels uncertain.
Okay. Do you want to continue?
I do have one other item that is not, I think that pretty well covers what, what my concerns were. We'll have to try to figure that out into an, another motion at one point. But then in one other thing that I would like to clarify, if possible, in this, while we're amending, is in section, I got to find it again. I'm on the wrong ordinance. Sorry. Where it states the allowable
zoning.
Zonings, I would like to change that slightly also. It's allowable zonings are fine. In the bottom where it says in special circumstances where an applicant has lost their residence due to a locally declared natural disaster, the affected applicant may seek exemption from zoning and minimum parcel size requirements. The through the planning commission part is what I would like to change. I think that we could change that to through the planning department or through the planning director. But actually, this is something that has come up. I've been in contact with someone who's, my issue, I was looking at a zoning map from who knows when, and so I didn't catch the fact that Ruth Lake Community Service District is no longer unclassified, but is actually an S U D. It's not, it's not captured in this ordinance when it was crafted for that exact area. So the initial cost estimate that that applicant got to go to the planning commission is $2,055. Because if you can speak to that, but if we can change one word in here and have that just be the director says, okay, Cody, do you think this works? And they sign off on it, it would be a lot easier for applicants than to have to go to the planning commission route. So yes, go ahead and.
Yeah, so we've been in conversation with that applicant. Because the way that this reads, we had a staff meeting about it and Ed can speak on it if you'd like to. But in, in the end, that is the description of a variance. So in order for staff to have a mechanism for financial recovery and a process and a permit to go through and start the project of making that decision with the planning commission, the, the permit would be a variance. So that's why they were quoted that amount because that is the cost of a traditional variance. So one way too would be to amend the zone if you want to include S U Ds.
Yeah, the, the, I would be okay with that. I don't see how we amend the allowed zoning without going back to the planning commission.
I don't either.
So and I, council could weigh in on this. And if, if we can amend the exception and make that at the will of the planning director, I don't think that I would put that on the building official because the building official isn't a planner. But the same thing, give some discretion to the planning department to say, yes, this fits this area. Or if it doesn't fit this area, then elevate that to the planning commission.
I would disclose in planning sense, it would need to be in allowed use by right. Otherwise, you know, the next level is a director's use permit and then the next level is back to the planning commission. So as long as in the S U D, it lists residential uses as an allowed use by right, then I wouldn't have any concern with that because then we're also jeopardizing our SEQA. Definition here, if we expand beyond allowed uses that already exist.
Yeah. So I, and the S U D we're talking about, well, it's, you know, the, the, but it, it is residential use by right, but not full time. So I, it should still fall under that. So, and I'm, I'm looking at you now. If I was to change this wording, what would you suggest that we just say parcel, that they would be able to sink exemptions from zoning and minimum parcel size requirements through planning?
I would have concern first with locally declared natural disaster. So if we have a definition for that, because all of these decisions need to be justifiable because they are appealable if the director makes a decision on it.
And when we first did this, it started out as the August complex, but by the time we got through the, then we also had the McFarland fire in the river complex and all these. So those had, we just changed that to locally declared emergencies.
I, and in the end, I'm not the director, so if Ed has any opinions on this.
If the director wants to.
Whatever he's comfortable with in this situation. Because I already said my opinion, if it's an allowed use by right, then I'm okay with the director. Seems fair.
Yes, I would, I would definitely agree with it. And I have no issue with that whatsoever because I would assemble the team and I would say, what are the recommendations? And I would, I would look at all the different caveats and problems that might arise out of it. So I have no issue making that decision.
Okay, and then okay, so then I guess I'll direct my question to council. Do we leave it broad and just say through planning? Or do we say at the discretion of the planning director?
At the discretion of the planning director. I don't, through planning doesn't have any legal meanings.
Okay, that's what I was.
I wouldn't know what it was. Yeah.
Right.
Well, can you, can you just repeat again, what, what is it that you're trying to provide this discretion for? What's your example?
For it would, the, the need to provide discretion in lot size is basically going to go away. That's what this was originally drafted for. But then it also says zoning requirements. And the only zonings that are not captured in here would be the S U D zones. I don't know of any other S U D zones in Trinity County that would be primarily residential, but Bella might.
There's a lot.
So those would be captured by this at the discretion of the director. Or if the board isn't comfortable with that, then I would propose that we would amend the allowable zonings and, and add S U D zoning to that. But at that point, we'd have to send it back to the planning commission.
Okay, I would add council, like if it's saying planning director makes a decision, is this a separate discretionary act that's going to have to occur?
As that phrase, and again, I don't know if that's the best mechanism to do it.
To SEQA.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of a bigger picture of, you know, zoning and what's allowed in it. And in this particular instance, it looks like we're saying, but let's leave it to the planning director decide to override our zoning requirements. And well, that's a kind of slippery slope. And you know, what, what are we allowing that for? We're about to have a discussion later today about the buffer zone versus, you know, variances and whether we allowed director discretion on that very specific thing. So yeah, just when we get to that level of, well, here's what's allowed in zones. But you know, if you don't like that, go ahead and change it, director. That, that's the only thing that concerns me, even though I don't have a concern about this specific thing, I have a concern about the approach in general.
And well, I, I was, I had concerns about that sentence when it got put in there. I initially didn't want any acreage minimums. I didn't foresee this problem because like I said, I was looking at a zoning map that was out of date. So it, it's kind of befuddling to me that one of the biggest reasons that I was pushing this so hard, I missed them. So I'm, and I'm, like I said, I'm open to the idea it takes more time, but I would rather take time and do it right than to have something that doesn't function. So if, if we need to do it that way, I would propose that we add S U D as an allowable zone with the proper S U D requirements because they all have their own special requirements. And then we could just do away with that whole section that says in special circumstances because there And then we could just do away with that whole section that says in special circumstances because there wouldn't be any special circumstances anymore.
Right.
Then.
I am not excited about it, but I think that that would be the most proper way to do it as well, and I'm also concerned. As I was getting at before, once it becomes a director's use permit in a sense. Because it's a quasi-director decision, we're gonna be losing funding, like. Cause there's no gonna, there's not gonna be a mechanism for us to recover s- specific circumstances where we're gonna have to. Prepare documentation for sequo because there's no way, once it qualifies as a project, to not do that work. So the proper way in my opinion would be to take it back to the planning commission with that amendment, so they can weigh in on um. Allowing S U Ds with um, specific mention of residences within. Use allowed by right.
And I.
You started your sentence with, I, why, I don't like this. You don't like what you just said.
This is just a very delayed process.
She just doesn't, she doesn't wanna have to take it back to the planning commission, which I don't want her to either, but I also want it to be correct.
You're saving yourself a lot of time in the long run, it seems like. Instead of hitting a bump that then requires.
Especially if we talk about.
Compared to processing a variance from a citizen, I guess.
And especially if um, we're talking, I don't know how many people in Ruth Lake lease lots, but even just that area, if we even had thirty. Or fifty people that decided they wanted to go this route, um, and you have to process that many. Directors use permits or variances. It's a lot easier for Cody to process a building permit.
So would you like to direct us to analyze the S U Ds that would be eligible for this?
Um, I don't. I would be comfortable in just allowing it in S U D that's with the proper S U D. Language, I mean, cause each S U D correct has a. When they develop their S U D, it has to state specifically what's allowed.
Yeah, um, historically, we have issues with S U Ds in the county not totally finishing their guidelines. Um, so a lot of the records are not super easy to read, um, but. I- in the best circumstances, they list what allowed uses are allowed by certain permit types or otherwise. But in order for me to present this to the planning commission with substance, I would need to do an analysis of all the subdivision. Of all the S U Ds, and so that way they have something to discuss. And, and know what they're deciding on. One other way, sorry, but one other way would be to just add the Ruth Lake. Lease lot S U D. I personally haven't analyzed that yet because I saw the first solution, which was a variance and kept moving on other work.
Yeah, which, so um, I, I would be okay with that. We would still probably have to go back to the planning commission if we only included Ruth Lake.
Yeah, either way, I'll probably do an analysis, but it's best if you guys kind of direct us to do that, because that's gonna be a, a lift, a little lift.
Yeah, and I guess I'm just gonna say, I, I think I heard. A lot of this discussion we're having is because the way it's written now would cause somebody to have to go through. A variance request, which is the cost of twenty-three hundred dollars. And the quote heavy lift you just referenced, I'm guessing is a whole lot more than that, in terms of cost of hours of allocation of time to staff.
Yeah, it's unforeseen how many people would apply, um, but.
But if you've been doing all this research on these parcels so that you can come back and make a recommendation, so that you could take it to the planning commission, so you can take it back to us and. So. Sounds like we're trying to solve a problem for a particular.
Well, no, well, there's, I guess you could say a particular parcel, but that parcel is split up into. Hundreds of lease lots that all burned in August complex, so um, that was one of the. Areas that I was actually trying to assist in rebuilding because um. Ruth Lake, the area around Ruth Lake is kind of a wasteland since twenty-twenty. There are a few places that have rebuilt, but there's uh, very little. So it would, anytime we can simplify it, especially for people in that. Perkylia, I guess we'll call it, um, situation. They can't build without a permit, but they can't live in their house they built permanently. So they can only stay there for ninety days, it's, that's part of their lease agreement, ninety days per year. But they are still required to have fire sprinklers, solar systems. Permanent water sources, which was another issue that we ran into it with on the lease slots. And all these things that are required by state building code that they can't really accomplish. Um, especially not for a ninety-day rental. Unit, basically, they're renting it from the. Uh, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, so uh, there are. Potentially several lease lots that would utilize it if we could make it something. Less onerous than. Costing the county, the time and the applicant, the money to go through the variance. Process, which especially. It's another one of those things where I don't really like to use the word variance there because what are we giving them a variance from?
That's a good point.
It would be a used variance.
It would be.
And that's illegal, so it's, it's kind of difficult to go that route, um, variances are. Pretty specific.
Yeah, the way it's written, it describes a variance, but you're right, I don't think I would have even be able to meet the findings.
Question, that's one extra layer, this brought before us says in areas. Where there is power for a sewer and water, and you said your intent was without.
Yes.
And what is Ruth Lake? Do they have or do they not?
They have, they have no, um, they have, there's municipal water, I guess, kind of at the campground. But there is not municipal water available to the leases, most of them are.
So in order to help them, we have to flip that portion of.
Well, if the way it's, the, the way it came back from the planning commission, their recommendation has nothing to do with municipal. Water or sewer, they just reduced it to a one acre minimum if we um. Add those fire restrictions and. And I would say that I would go with that if we just put those fire restrictions on parcels less than five acres. Would make me feel a little bit better. Because as Cody stated earlier, those, that idea was for those one acre parcels. To stop the spread of fire. But we still haven't solved the issue of there are places that I missed in my zoning and I was. So very happy that I did this actually based on zoning and not just making stuff up and then. I missed one.
And is it fair to say that I, you were offering that you would have to go do all this research to determine which.
Yeah, I don't imagine it would take too much time.
Okay, but, but it's not, you, you, you wouldn't feel comfortable just blanketly saying the S U Ds, yeah, it's fine.
Not at all, because the S U Ds are totally diverse and some of them are beyond confusing.
Okay.
But.
Go ahead.
This is a real plan, it'll hopefully help with that.
You know, I, I. I was just trying to think of the S U Ds I've been through, I know we have, we have some S U Ds that are basically. Crafted just for cannabis. One, and, and then we have, I don't know.
Five Cent Gulch Schoolhouse Road. That's Estralita.
So.
Review.
So there's.
The, the park at the end of town.
That, yeah, the, the industrial park is an S U D, which, but I.
We've got a whole binder full of them.
Yeah, so it. I, I don't know the perfect language if we said that the S U Ds that allow.
Residence.
Residential.
Allowed by you, allowed use by right.
So.
That means without any other discretionary actions, it's.
And then what happens, for instance, you mentioned. Five Cent Gulch, but isn't that zoned? Oh wait, that S U D is a zone all of its own.
Sometimes there's even mixed split zones within S U Ds.
Yes.
So was all this leading to a second motion?
Uh, eventually, yes. So, but I, I do, I want to kind of know what the, where the board wants to go with this on that um. Zoning portion, it's like, I, I, much as I hate to say it, I think the best route would be to go. Change the zoning and I don't know if the board would be, feel more. Uh, secure in saying Ruth Lake Community Service District lease lots. Or if you want to say S U Ds that. Because my, I was using the zones that capture rural, I didn't use the. R one zones are, and so some of those S U Ds. Like Bella said, are going to be split zones, they might have high-density zoning in part of them that wouldn't fit, so. It makes it more difficult, it would have been easier if my map was accurate and Ruth Lake was still unclassified.
Well, uh, I, I think I even heard Bella say that she wasn't even, she hadn't even dug in enough on. This particular S U D.
I didn't, I didn't know it was gonna be a question for today.
Sorry.
So, so I don't know if we're any more comfortable, but it, it, if, if part of what you're saying is. You're, you're really looking at this partly because you didn't consider one thing, but also this is being holistically relooked at. Because of additional fires, but we don't know where the next fire is going to be, so if we limit. Because to Ruth Lake, because that's the one that's on our mind now, we could always come back and add it later if somebody wanted to. But if we just do the homework now.
Yeah, I don't know how many S U Ds have been affected by catastrophic wildfire, it, I guess it's possible that we could have some in. Coffee Creek.
We have some up north, S U Ds.
But.
They're really cold.
Or we could just. Say that uh, I gotta find my language again. We could just change that. Sentence to say that in special circumstances where the applicant lost their residence due to a locally declared natural disaster, or we could change that to a. Wildfire. But I, I do think it needs to be a. Substantial. The affected applicant. Will be exempt from zoning and. Uh, acreage minimums, but then we would open it up to people, if Weaverville got burnt down. Um, you would be able to rebuild a limited density.
I don't feel comfortable with our zoning or with our sequo determination at that point.
Okay.
We'd have to rework that.
Okay, so, uh, Supervisor Fraser, it sounded like before you make your second motion, you were looking for some kind of board feedback about. How this change in zoning would be approached, whether it be a Ruth Lake. Specific or more broadly the S U Ds, is that valid?
Yes.
Okay, so do people want to weigh in on that so that he can form his? Second motion? But he's basically saying, as he forms his motion, are you gonna be more supportive if it includes just Ruth Lake? Or if it includes all of them as analyzed by planning?
Is analyzing heavy, light, or medium lifting?
Um, intellectually, it seems like an easy concept. Um, but I, you know, timing wise, we're gonna need to look through every single S U D. And we were, we're gonna get into the weeds with some of them, from what I remember, um, we may have some zoning issues, we may have to work out with R C D. To make sure that we're looking at the right zones, um, and again, like the higher density concept, I foresee that coming up the planning commission. And especially with the Fire Chiefs Association, because they were most concerned about ingress and egress. Um, regardless of parcel size. And I, you know, my recommendation at this point is to narrow your request as much as you can. And if this is solely for a request in the S U D with the Ruth Lake lease lots, S U D. Um, maybe recommend that and we can analyze just that at the planning commission. And then we'll bring a recommendation and you'll see what happens after that.
And knowing that we could always, we being the board at sitting at the time, could come up with, with another S U D or something if we felt like that was. Appropriate, but rather than do them all right now when we don't know that we'll ever need any of the rest of them assessed, is that what you're saying?
Um, I'm saying, yeah, just to, these later requests are really what's delaying this thing, so as much as we can figure out what you. This is hard because I wish I had some material here to help you guys with your discussion, but I don't.
Okay, well, and certainly respect that we're, we're very understaffed, very backlogged, and so everything that we're adding to the list is. Holding back other things.
Right, the other projects.
Close enough here, so, okay, other questions or you guys ready to provide some guidance to Dan, Supervisor Fraser?
It does seem that each S U D, like I've just listed out the ones I could capture that you kind of tossed off the top of your head. They're each gonna come with their own sort of discussion, sort of, and so. It, it does seem to Chair Lutwiler's point, when needed, those could be discussed and analyzed.
It could, you could always make another request as a board resolution to amend it again later. But it, just to piggyback on that, S U D does stand for specific unit development, so there's going to be specific, very specific. Things in each of those S U Ds that deal with the topography or culture or whatever, for the reasons of why those were created. And my biggest concern at this point, I know I said it about three times, is the sequo determination. So we're qualifying this as, as a no project and exemptions. Um, if we expand beyond any allowed uses, I can't do that and this, then you go into initial study territory for an amendment.
Yeah. So I was just gonna say, cause I know like Estralita Heights, I'm dealing with right now, I've got a house in it right now and it's very specific, the color. I mean, everything, and then the other thing I would keep in mind too is that when you start getting to these other S U Ds that are very specific. The people that are in those S U Ds are probably not gonna be on board with this. So it would almost seem to me the best one would be that Ruth Lake Community Services District, and the other reason I say that is because on top of. Not only our review, they also have to have approval from Humboldt Municipal and the Ruth Lake Community Services District. So they actually have to get a letter from them, letting them know that this is a limited density rural builder. These are, you know, here's my plans, this is what I want to do, so by doing that Ruth Lake one specifically, you're gonna get. Almost three reviews and I think you're gonna have more of something that functions within what we're trying to do with this ordinance. If you get into these other S U Ds, I think you're gonna be opening up a huge can of worms, just because I know of the ones that I've dealt with so far. They are extremely specific, and once you get into something like this, you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna be upset. So that Ruth Lake Community Services one might be just the easiest, hey, we're trying to do this for them and the reason why is because it is a very specific. You know, not topography related, but really like Dan said, they're, they're not there permanently. Their water sources, a lot of them, they have tanks, they got water tanks that they have, they're there for when they, when they need them. So they do have seppics, they have to go through all that kind of stuff like that, so I think if we just minimalize it to that specifically. I think we're gonna meet what the intent of what this ordinance was trying to meet, it was just kind of an oversight. You know, not having that specific part of it.
Thank you. So do you have the input you need?
I guess so, um, so.
Would it be best for me to withdraw my?
No, I can make a subsequent, yeah, I'll make a subsequent motion that we'll see if it goes. Um, I would make a subsequent motion that we. Adopt this ordinance uh, with the changes, um, incorporating the. Some of the changes from the planning commission, but in the, in section. I fifteen-two-five-oh-three-oh allowable zonings. Um, that limited density rural dwellings are only allowed in the following zones for parcels one acre or larger. And under that, add G, um, Ruth Lake Community Service District S U D. Going down farther to. The fifteen-point-two-five-point-oh-four-oh-X fire safety requirements. I would ask that. At the end of that, we add for. Parcels under five acres.
And that's limiting the fire safety requirements?
To the, to the smaller parcels. Um, and then, which, most of those fire safety standards are actually captured in this ordinance already, so this is just reiterating. And then. I really. I would say existing structures shall be eligible for permits under this chapter without. I would say instead of without penalty, at the discretion of the building official for a period. Ending July first, twenty-twenty-seven. And then. July first, twenty twenty seven.
And you were also incorporating the, um, director's discretion for what?
The building, the building officials discretion on the, um, existing structures.
I, I, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to interject, but little curve ball is I was able to pull up our SUD guideline binder, which is scanned on our website, um, under Ruth Lake CSD, which guideline's not yet written. So I'm gonna try to scroll through this document and see if there's something, but that's gonna be a curve ball, because that's something that we run into pretty frequently with these.
So at, at that point though, I think I've, before we get too much into discussion, is everybody, is everybody clears mud on my motion?
What I have is subsequent motion made to adopt the ordinance with the following changes. Add Ruth Lake Community Services SUD. Limit fire safety requirements to parcels less than five acres. Incorporate building officials discretion on existing structures. Add an end date of July first, twenty twenty seven.
Um, and then, and that, the first part also, I changed that first sentence from five acres to one acre as as the planning commission did, uh, um, in allowable zoning parcel size.
The, the only count, this is the the record that they have in this binder is a policy handbook from the Community Services District. So it's not a resolution or, or really an ordinance signed by the board that regulates what can and cannot be allowed uses. So I don't have any, from what I have in front of me right now, I, we can dive in and try to do more research on that, but I remember in the back of my head, this always kind of being an issue that holds people up because we, there's no written document that's clear.
Okay, so I'd like to take a break for you to finalize this and see if we can get a second.
Yeah, I think, um, I think that my motion, how you read it back is my motion that with the um, except that the very top word I read out limited density rural dwellings are only allowed in the following zones for parcels one acre or larger instead of and that was the recommendation of the planning commission. And then I added G, so.
Explain to me, I'm sorry, I'm missing it. You are limiting any fire safety.
I'm just limiting those where we're calling out chapter seven A and all the state codes to, to parcels under five acres. And I would do that by just putting that at the very end of that red square that was proposed by the planning commission.
And is there any possible way to clean up the language in that paragraph? So it doesn't, it doesn't, it, right now it just reads as it's our intent that you would do this. It doesn't seem like it is required.
Well, it says shall comply. That is that is, uh, there's no wiggle room in shall.
Are you in different sections?
Perhaps.
Fifteen two five oh three oh, uh, actually it says as section fifteen two five oh four oh X to read.
Why is that not here?
Are you in the?
I'm on oh four oh A technical code, except it's.
Um, probably the and not the planning commission's
Thank you.
Okay, so Supervisor Fraser, I think, um, it sounded like after I read what I had, there was one thing I missed and I'm still not clear on what I missed.
Changing from five acres to one acre.
And what are we changing from five acres to one?
The zones, uh, allowable zones for parcels, it used to say five acres or larger, and I'm saying one acre or larger.
Okay.
I believe, was it council who said we needed to clean up the locally declared natural disaster and it needed to be specific? Somebody said that.
I, I said that. I just had concerns for interpretation later on, if if locally declared nat, I imagine locally declared natural disaster may be defined somewhere else in state code.
Um, and I would, in my, in my, my, uh, motion, I took that entire sentence out. Because if we reduce the acreage from five to one and that captures ninety nine point nine percent. And if I add SUD around Ruth Lake, that captures the others I know of. And so it wouldn't be required to have that in there anymore. The, the reason that language was in there is to help people that had under five acre parcels that lost their homes in wildfires. So if we drop it to one acre, we don't, we don't really need that language anymore.
So you would remove it?
I would just remove it, yes.
Um, one other thing I'm thinking of right now, this is gonna require more research to have a determination actually on this Ruth Lake SUD of what's going on, because our, we'd have to go through all the ordinances since this potentially was created or not created to figure out whether it was created properly with an actual ordinance amendment. Um, and if it wasn't, then it potentially could revert back, and I'm looking at county council, but it could potentially revert back to what the zone was.
Unclassified. So it would be kept, captured. Okay, so there's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Case, then it wouldn't need to go back to the planning commission.
Correct. So just be a determination by, like, I'll show, I'll forward market all of the records and she'll make a determination.
So we could then potentially see this on the next board meeting with just the amended the amendments that are being proposed right now and no extra loop back.
But I'm just not certain of that until I really dive deep into it for hours.
We'll either come back as a second reading at the next meeting, or, um, we will inform the CAO clerk of the board that it needs to get sent back to planning and it'll go back to planning.
For somebody would have to second my motion.
Oh, I'll second that one. Sorry, I thought we were amending. I was waiting for Heidi.
Okay, so again, I know that I was not capturing the super detail and, and county council, is it fair to say that if I go with what I've written uh, as directional, then you can work with planning to make that as specific as it needs to be. So I will, I will restate and just tell me if this is sufficient for what we need to approve, if this is what we're gonna approve. A subsequent motion is made to adopt the ordinance with the following changes. Add Ruth Lake Community Services SUD. Limit fire safety requirements to parcels less than five acres. Incorporate building officials discretion on existing structures. Add end date of July first, twenty twenty seven. Change five acre requirement to one acre in allowable zones. Remove language focused on eligibility tied to local disasters.
Correct.
And then, and the, obviously there's a lot of detail that has to be worked out, but that's sufficient to avoid us getting back into a back and forth with planning commission, if it has to go to planning commission. Okay.
In the end, if we determine that the SUD was formed properly and it is an SUD, would you like us to go back to the planning commission?
Yeah, that's what the motion would.
I know, I know, I know that was redundant. I just like to hear it.
All right, so discussion on the second motion. All right, call for the vote.
Supervisor Cox?
Hi.
Supervisor Frasier?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Lutwiler?
Aye. Okay, now we will take a eight minute break. Be back at ten forty five.
We're going back in time. Twelve forty five.
Twelve forty five. Yeah, let's go back to ten forty five.
I use that one.
Trying. All right, welcome back. Uh, we are back in open session. Item four point two. Discuss and give direction to staff regarding the proposed schedule of presentations to the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, I am one who put this on the agenda and provided the attachments and the backup reports. So just for the supervisors awareness as we jump into this and the public, if they would like to offer comments. My, uh, you know, I haven't acted as the chair before, so I don't know what all was going on in the background about how presentations got on the agenda, but as I was thinking about, um, the various things that we approved as priorities in the strategic plan. As I was thinking about the various organizations that we might want to learn from to inform ourselves as we make decisions about that. I thought, uh, we have limited numbers of meetings, so it might be helpful to actually look ahead and say, this is these are the people we'd like to hear from and here's the timing for that to take place, so that we could get one, make sure that the limited amount of time we have for presentations is used by those things that we think are most important for us to hear. And to give sufficient not, uh, notice to, to get the right people on the list. So I put together that spreadsheet that's in the backup materials and it uh, was not meant to be, you know, complete. You can see the latter part of the year is not as full as the beginning part of the year. Um, and I had the categories just to kind of, uh, identify some of the areas of interest that I saw as we were um, as I was thinking about the strategic plan, you know, natural resources, obviously a big one and health and safety is a big one, economic development's a big one, and then there's the other. So it was trying to show how well are we covering these various areas? Who are we asking to come in? What are we asking them to focus on? And, um, and then the idea was that here, we would have some discussion about, one, do you agree with taking this approach to the scheduling of board presentations and allotting our time in this manner? Uh, assuming you do, then, uh, what input do you have? And it doesn't have to be all finalized today. It doesn't mean that you have to come up today with all the uh, specific things that you'd like to say about what should or shouldn't be on the list. Um, but anything we can capture like that would be great. And then, um, set a time for us to make sure that we are, uh, uh, if we are gonna proceed this way, that we lock this down pretty soon with input. So, um, with that, any questions from the board before we have public comment? So with that, any questions from the board before we have public comment?
Did you say that we are gonna in our comment, we'll be able to move things around a little bit or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, then we'll take a public comment on the agenda. Items. Any in the room? And is Adrian online? Okay, Adrian, now finally you can give that input.
Hey, thank you, sir. Adrian Keys from Hayfork. Thanks, Chair and Board. I appreciate this structure for sure. I think this is super helpful. Probably something that could have been done before, but I'm glad it's coming up now. Before I get into my two requests, I would say, and seeing as hell back half of the year is a little bit less flushed out. That there should somehow try and figure out maybe to have some future flexibility because items come up out of the middle of nowhere. People need presentations. So I don't know exactly how, but to build out some sort of flexibility, maybe like a five minute slot that could be held open periodically or something. All right, well, first I would love to ask for the California Appalachians Project presentation from Janine Coleman of Origins Council to be scheduled again. My apologies for crossed wires on the last one. And I think this is a great program and it ties in much with the next program I'm going to ask for, but this one is an example of my earlier comment is I cannot offer a set date for it because it's a program in development. But I, because of this structure, though, I would like to throw this concept out so that we can have a meeting when the time is right. It's a, it's called the Legacy Cannabis Genetics Program. It's a multi-year research project. I can't go too far into the details of it. I'm not really qualified to, but it's also coming through the Origins Council. And its intent is very similar to the Appalachian of Origin Program, which is to tie value back to the community and to the land where a product is produced. In this case, it's cannabis. But it's, it will be an internationally recognized couple of programs, very exciting with the idea of actually like adding value to our product, but not to the product itself, but to our communities and to our, and to our resources. So those are my two things. And again, I hope that we can figure out a way of maintaining a little flexibility for things that come up out of the blue.
Thank you. Adrian, would you just repeat the first one again? I know I have it, but I always want to make sure other people heard it.
Was the Cannabis Appalachians Program? I believe is the first one.
Right, okay.
First of its kind in the world.
I have no other raised hands.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the board. And again, looking for emotions, really just discussion, I guess the first part is just to say, are you comfortable with taking this sort of forward-looking structured approach to allocating our time for presentations in general?
Yes, I would say so. I do believe those, same as Adrian said, we need to have some room in there for flexibility for things that just come up and so we can have a time slot, even if we keep our presentations to 15 minutes or 10 minutes or whatever on that day. It's like, okay, don't have a presentation that's going to take an hour and then try to fit one in. But if we can kind of finesse in some of the ones that might happen along the lines, I'm okay with that, too. That would be at your discretion.
At least for now. And Supervisor Cox, I saw you nodding your head, yes?
Oh, I just, I applaud your foresight and planning and think it's a great idea. And also in looking down the list, which I've now lost, there it is. You know, some of those I can see may be just five-minute presentations and easily lend themselves to that extra space that those things that do pop up by.
Okay.
Yeah, the timing aspect, but no, I think your foresight is awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the structure is good, but we do need to leave some flexibility in there for spur of the moment, I'll call it.
Okay.
Things to happen, you know, how do we know? We're going to need to have something in there, but I do like the structure of it and the way it will move along.
Great.
But we never know when someone's going to pop up.
Right, thank you.
I concur with the, with the other supervisors. I do want to say that I've already been in previous conversations and we've talked about it both with CAO Tet Hill and then in conversation to have the tribes do their presentation in late April, early May. We've kind of talked about that. So maybe switching that up closer rather than September, since I've already made contact with them.
And that's in late April, early May?
Yes, sir.
And how many?
It would be two to three tribes.
And separate presentations?
Yes.
And how long are you thinking?
Oh, I haven't got to that place and thought yet, but I wouldn't imagine more than 10 minutes.
Okay.
And we're hearing from them ideally all on the same day for comparison or unity between them?
In conver, just, just to find out where each one of them are in terms of, you know, their tribal organizations, particularly federal recognition, and then to revisit the current memorandum of understanding that our county has to freshen that and to lift it up to to current era and our current understanding of utilizing that. And just kind of reintroducing it back to the department so that we make sure that we're fulfilling that memorandum of understanding that is in existence and then having the chance to add anything to it. And then potentially letters of support as they seek federal recognition.
Very good.
Yeah.
Anything else that people would like to, for the moment, say they would like to add or change? Okay, well, I think, thank you. I appreciate your support. We will move forward. I think we can work with Deputy Clerk of the Board and find someplace to store this centrally so that people can always see what it is and be able to provide input and we'll just use that as a way to keep an eye. And there isn't, I think to the flexibility, we don't have a set X amount of time for presentations and we don't have a set number of presentations, but we do try to keep an eye on okay, how much of time are we going to take up and what else is on the agenda? And are we going to be still meeting at 10 o'clock at night, kind of a thing? And I think like today, we had one, just one presentation. There were going to be two, and as Adrian mentioned, there was a little mix up. But that one presentation took almost an hour. So we do have to be thoughtful about, well, how do we communicate to the presenter and how do we manage our own time? Because I know I can get into asking a lot of questions, too. But be thoughtful about that so that we make sure we're using what we think is the appropriate amount of time. But I think it's easy for us to have flexibility, even within this structure.
Certainly, today's presentation was enormously heavily weighted as far as our own focus.
And that's, and not surprising either, right?
That's, that's what I mean by intention.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Just to provide some historical background on it, and the, the policy of the county has always been that presentations during that presentation session is the presenter is requested to limit them to 10 minutes. If they do believe they are going to be longer, we do request that they provide that information in advance. And then the CAO, along with the Chair, can determine whether it, permission is granted to extend that a period of time. But that has always been the practice that's been utilized in the admin department.
Usually go long.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you. We'll, we'll get that posted somewhere and people can continue to provide input and then we'll use that to start coordinating. I will say, just if it wasn't clear, you might have noticed things like there were presentations, say, from HRN and others as we led up to a presentation about the strategic plan item of healthy community strategy. So the idea is, well, let's get informed about what various entities are doing and what things are going on. And now let's have a discussion about the healthy community strategy and similar with other areas. So that thematic approach is ideally what we can do, but we'll, we'll see how it goes. Okay, thank you. Okay, under Cannabis County Matters 4.3, conduct an appeal hearing to uphold, modify, or overturn the Planning Commission's decision to deny the appeal of the Director's decision to deny a commercial cannabis license renewal application, CCL-208 for 480 Oak Ranch Road, Lewiston, California. CCL applicant Stefan Monav, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Appellant Stefan Monav, Planning File P-23-09. Director Pavani, welcome back.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I think we are, Chair Supervisors, Drew Pavani, Cannabis Division Director. I'm just going to go ahead and give a little bit of background as it's detailed in the discussion section of the agenda item. So on November 19th, 2020, the Planning Department received a number of documents related to this license essentially during that timeframe. To do, there wasn't a transfer form per se. There was the release form and then an application. So those documents were received at that time. Following that in, so on January 3rd, 2022, the applicant submitted an appendix C document, which was received by the county. And at that time, all of the appendix Cs were just sort of automatically going to the Sequo Consultants, Laco and Helix for review. When that appendix C came back as most, you know, during that early timeframe for the review of those appendix Cs, as we were still sort of working through the criteria and the specifics of appendix C review, that project came back with an incomplete letter. And at that point, staff took note of the fact that it was an appendix C within the Lewiston Expansion opt-out. And so at that point, following that, on March 20th, 2023, a letter was sent to, from the Cannabis Division to the applicant essentially denying their submission of the appendix C document. And then that Director's decision to deny the application and the appendix C document was appealed to the Planning Commission. We had the Planning Commission hearing. The Planning Commission denied the appeal and the Planning Commission's decision was appealed to the Board of Supervisors, which is why we are here today. So I don't know if, you know, obviously I'm here for any technical clarifying questions. There was, you know, a very extensive sort of my best attempt to provide the historical happenings related to the original application. And, and, you know, forward from there, obviously I wasn't employed with the county at that time. So I did my best to provide all of the documentation, you know, in the backup to the Planning Commission Staff Report and, you know, obviously included in the backup to you all today, just to give as much information as I had access to. That being said, there are some questions as to why the application was not processed. And unfortunately, I won't be able to give you any more clarity than you're able to garner from the review of those extensive documents.
Okay. Any questions of staff before we move with public comments by the Appellants? Did you have?
Yeah, I didn't, so I'll go first. Drew, do you feel that this application is in queue? Or was in queue in this opt-out area?
Do you mean was the application received prior to the adoption of the Lewiston Expansion ordinance?
Yes, I know we went through some iterations there, but yes.
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge and to, you know, from the, the documentation that's available related to this, you know, specific application and the Lewiston Expansion Ordinance adoption. Yeah, I mean, you know, the dates, at least looking at the dates, the application was received prior to the adoption of that ordinance.
So refresh my memory and it probably needs it. A month or so back when we were talking about carve-outs, opt-outs. I don't know if it was this particular one or not, but I think it may have been. I don't know if it was Rick or Jill, but one, one of the two said that we should continue processing applications that are in queue at this point.
So I don't recall the exact meeting date, but yeah, that was in the last month or so when there was, you know, I think the, the most recent discussion about opt-outs. And, you know, providing direction to staff related to coming back with the timelines and the options on, you know, how to establish the overlay zones and, and things of that nature. Yeah, I believe a comment was made by Supervisor Cox related to processing the existing applications in those proposed opt-outs. If that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I just, yeah, that's what I was going to. So with that being said, is that our stance?
I can't speak to the stance of the board.
Um, anybody else?
Well, it's not a question to him.
No, I mean, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to chip in on that. Because it would seem that we've chosen a stance and then we are now going to make a decision on a stance that we've already kind of agreed upon a month or two ago.
Well. Yeah, I, well, I'll let Supervisor Cox speak for herself, but I would say the board made no decision about this in the past. There was discussion about the three proposed or the requests for opt-outs that had been sitting with county for two to three years. And there was discussion about applications that had already been processed and approved in those areas, applications that were pending in those areas. Discussion about whether they should continue or not continue, all of which is two, four years after this is happening. So whatever was discussed and there was no decision. I don't know how you retroactively apply that to four years ago when it was a different board. And so I, I just want to be clear. There may have been some comments before. I don't, again, if you're alluding to Supercox statements, I'll let her comment on that, but.
No, go ahead, ever.
If you want to say anything.
Is this what I remember?
Well, I would, I would first say we're in a process problem because right now we're supposed to be just asking questions and suddenly we're in discussion about what I did or didn't say, which apparently holds a lot of weight, interestingly, over something that I think there's more details to probably ask questions and hear about. So.
Okay. So any other questions of staff? I, I will say I had reached out to Drew in advance with, based on seeing some of this stuff and was asking things like, and Drew was only able to gather as much as he could, because as he said, he wasn't employed at the time, but you know, how many applications were we handling at that time? Because I'm thinking of today, you know, you've processed over 200 in the last couple of years and you're still sitting on 70, 80, or 100. I can't remember what the number is. So there's always some flux and flow. And so I didn't know how, you know, what was that backlog bandwidth, whatever. And so you said, I think it was around 60 or 61 or something that were processed in the window between when it was submitted and when the opt-out took place or something like that. I can't remember exactly the question and answer, actually.
Yeah, and that, that is not a I, I don't feel confident in that data set. That was essentially those, that 60-something was just going through Smart Gov and just trying to search the date range of, I believe it was November 2020 to mid-June 21, and it just showed that there were 60-some applications at that time. I don't know that Smart Gov was being used to the best of its capabilities in terms of how we were documenting. So I would say that's a clear indication that at least we took in during that timeframe 66 payments, because in order to take in a payment, it has to be logged in Smart Gov to generate the invoice. And then what I can say is that over the last year or so, we certainly have in reviewing, you know, related to the credit refund worksheet and reviewing old fees and, and the question of whether or not they should be applied to current licensure period, I can say with certainty that there are, there have been a number of applications that were received in 2020 that did not get approved until 2022, 2023, 2024, in some cases. And that's more a result of, you know, I would say generally 2020, there was, you know, the ongoing litigation with TAA, COVID, pending program shutdown, program shutdown, COVID-2. And so, you know, we certainly have just still been processing old applications from 2020, you know, that, that probably certainly submitted appendix C in, likely in '22, if that, if that helps to kind of just give some more context.
And there were a number of questions, but the only other one I'll share at this point was just, I was referring to the urgency ordinance language. Basically, I'm just taking pieces, but create a moratorium on the issuance of new and transferred commercial cannabis cultivation licenses. No new No new or transferred commercial cannabis cultivation licenses shall be issued within. And then the question was, um, at the time the ordinance was adopted, was the application to transfer the license complete and, and, and the applicant, uh, active? As a, as a current, because the other terminology from the, from the term, from the documents are current commercial cannabis cultivation licensee within the Lewiston opt-out extension area. So it was basically saying, did it meet the current commercial cannabis cultivation licensee in the Lewiston opt-out area? And the answer was, um, that it was not an active issued license. It, it may have been a complete application. We, you know, don't know at the time, but she weren't there, but it was not, uh, an active issued license at the time.
Right. Ba- based on my review and, and best understanding of, you know, the application requirements at that time, I would say it was a complete application, but it certainly was not an issued active license at the time that the order, the ordinance was adopted.
Yeah. And then I'd asked the question, I guess I'd go to one more. I'd asked about the appendix C because that's part of what I was trying to understand is I saw that an appendix C came in later, but what you were clarifying, I think, was that was submitted because at the time it was submitted, that would be required. But at the time they initially submitted what they were submitting to transfer the license in, it wasn't required. Am I correct?
Yeah. So, you know, it, the, the sort of exact timeline there in terms of when the appendix C template went public is not entirely clear to me, but it was in late twenty-one. The transition plan was also adopted around that same timeframe in October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And so my, my response to you was that I would consider the adoption of the transition plan by the Board of Supervisors to essentially be the effective date. There were some appendix Cs that came in, uh, late twenty twenty-one, but the majority of them didn't start coming in until early twenty-two.
Okay. Um, and so maybe to, to county council, just the clarification, is it, uh, cause I just, I do think it's at least relevant to the discussion is the requirement for an appendix C was not in effect at the time that the applicant submitted their documentation to transfer in their license. Because that requirement came afterwards. Am I, do I have the timing right?
I, I'm not necessarily sure I agree with that. I think the requirement's always been required. It's just whether we had enforced that. I mean, and that's more accurate, I think, statement. So, um, I think what we've, we've ultimately made the determination is that that is part of the plan that should have been in place the entire time.
Okay.
So if I may just sort of clarify, I would, I would say that the requirement to do site-specific analysis was certainly in place at that time. But the associated documentation and exactly how the county was going to do that had not been implemented as specifically as it relates to the appendix C, you know, document that's tiered off of the final EIR because the final EIR, um, was adopted on twelve twenty-one, twenty twenty. So.
And I think that's a fair analysis is that, but, but again, SEQU has always been required. It's just we hadn't, we didn't have the underlying documents to tier off of at that time, correct?
Appreciate the clarification. Okay. Uh, no other questions, then we can hear from folks on the matter. Mr. Blanko, are you starting? No? Who's, who's?
I think Mr. Maggitt's.
Can the board hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, this is Ben Maggitt. I've been retained by Mr. Motov, um, on this matter. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person. I have a scheduling conflict here in, in Shasta today.
Please continue.
Okay, um, so I think I wanted to start with, um, and I, I'm not sure, uh, how much the board is aware for the, the history of, of this matter, but I think it, it, it makes sense to probably go through it a little bit, at least the bullet points. Um, so, uh, Mr. Monav applied for, uh, a license on the nineteenth of November, um, all the way back in twenty twenty. The license, uh, was transferred, uh, from a, a, a property in the Pines about ten days later. So I think, I think on the twenty-ninth of November, the license was transferred. Uh, immediately after that transfer, uh, Mr. Monav began, uh, preparing the site. He, um, I believe he commissioned a well. He, he, uh, contacted Flora for their assistance in, uh, doing everything that they needed to do to, uh, come into compliance. Uh, I think a, a rain catchment was, uh, struck, was built. Um, there was extensive correspondence, uh, between Mr. Mona, the county, Flora, uh, over the course of, um, several years to make sure that the, the property was, was in compliance on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, that's when the, the urgency opt-out ordinance was passed. It was then extended, um, to July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Um, during this, uh, after the establishment of this, uh, ur- uh, urgency opt-out ordinance, uh, there were still communication between the county, county officials, Mr. Monav, Flora, uh, instructing Mr. Monav, uh, to do certain things, to, uh, come into compliance. Uh, then of course the ordinance three one five dash eight five one, uh, was, was, uh, adopted on the seventeenth of May, twenty twenty-two. Uh, it came into effect, I guess about thirty days later, but it was adopted on the seventeenth of May. But even after that, that ordinance was adopted and the opt-out, uh, became more or less, uh, permanent. Uh, Mr. Monav received another letter, uh, from the county, uh, on May twenty-fourth, so a week after three one five dash eight five one was, was adopted, uh, telling him additional things that he should do, uh, to ensure that the property was in compliance. Um, Mr. Monav continually, uh, uh, relied on, uh, statements from the county, continually acted on, uh, requests from the county. And then he, um, he got his denial letter in March of twenty twenty-three, um. I, I spoke briefly at the, uh, Planning Commission before the Planning Commission on this matter and, um, I, 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 at one of the previous hearings, uh, when I was not able to be there, I think there was, there was a comment by one of the commenters, um, that it's, that this is an open and shut case, that the, um, uh, the opt-out is in place, uh, there, there's no, um, there's no explicit, uh, exception to it. And so, um, you know, the, the planning commission, uh, should rule, um. It's, it's, and I said in the front of the planning commission, I'll say again now, it's, it's not an open and shut case. This is a situation where uh, Mr. Monav again, um, uh, relied on assurances from the county, responded to requests from the county, spent, um, a lot of time, a lot of money, uh, trying to come into compliance with the, um, with the belief that he was ultimately going to be able to obtain, uh, the license, um. That, that, that being said, I mean, I, I, I do want to recognize that that this, that there are competing interests here and, and that, uh, I, I don't mean to minimize the, um, the interest of, of the opposition, you know, they, they have, um, they have interests, um, in, uh, you know, maintain, first of all, they wanted to establish these opt-outs and they want to maintain the opt-outs. And, um, and so I, I, I didn't mean to imply in front of the planning commission, I'm not gonna state here that the opposition, and this is almost always the case, uh, that the opposition is entirely meritless. I mean, that's why, that's why we're here today. It's why we have this, this mechanism, um, and that of course is the, is the job of the board is to, uh, weigh these competing interests and, and figure out what the most, uh, just resolution is. And I would say that despite, um, uh, the opposition having, having legitimate interests, um, that the, like I said in front of the planning commission, that the board should find that Mr. Monav is uh, uniquely situated here. He, um, he was caught in a, just in sort of a terrible, uh, from his perspective, for sure, a terrible sequence of events where he uh, invested again, a lot of time, a lot of money, and then the rub was kind of pulled out from under him, uh, really by no fault of his own. Um, you know, in the law, all the time we have exceptions to the rule, and then we have exceptions to the exceptions and on and on and on. And I think the, the purpose of that is to, um, ensure as much as possible that whatever law is governing, whatever issue has as much as possible, but the flexibility required to, to achieve a just outcome. And I think given all the facts of this case, uh, it, denying Mr. Mona of the license after, um, after his, again, his reliance on, on county statements, his, uh, his, uh, his willingness to, to abide by any requirements that the, uh, the, the county required, um. I think that the, the just thing to do here is to find an exception. It can be, it, it can of course be an exception so narrowly tailored that it really only applies to Mr. Mona. Um, and, and, and has no, has no force of, of, uh, precedent or anything like that. Um, and i- i- the, the opt-out area, and I mentioned this, the two in front of the planning commission, the opt-out area, as I'm sure the board knows, is, um, is, is really, um, a combination of ag parcels and then rural residential, and there are other um, farms sort of operating in the opt-out area. But, but there's a winery, there's a llama farm. And practically speaking to, um, uh, to honor, uh, Mr. Monav's efforts and, uh, and grant him this license is not going to have any real effect on the community or, um, any, uh, deleterious impact on, on the neighbors. And, uh, I, I, I don't think it's going to, um, uh, affect their, um, their legitimate interest. And again, i- i- you, as I've been thinking more about this matter, I think that, like I said, the opposition certainly has, um, legitimate interest. I, I don't know, uh, know what the board, uh, know, knows about me, but I, I practice primarily criminal defense in town and I'm aware that sometimes, sometimes there's, um, uh, negative, some, uh, negative, uh, effects that are associated with, with cultivation. But again, if we're looking at what is, what is, uh, you know, some shady characters or environmental damage or something like that. But if we're, if we're trying to, um, tailor the law and find exceptions so that the most just outcome can be achieved, then, uh, you have to look at Mr. Monav and who Mr. Monav is and, uh, who his family are and what his desires are. And his desire, like anyone else, is to just earn a living and, and take care of his family. And, and that's why he's in, invested so much time and treasure into, into Trinity County. And quite frankly, it's our position that, um, such a dedication to the community, I mean, he has kids that, that he wants to raise here. Such a dedication to the community should, um, should be rewarded. Uh, he did everything that the county asked him to do. Um, he, he honestly, he, he has no, I think he's, uh, understandably upset about the situation, but he, he, he has no real hard feeling. He wants to remain in the county. He loves Trinity County. His family loves Trinity County. He just wants to be able to, to earn a living and support his family in, in Trinity County. Um, and so we are asking for, uh, for an, an exception. And again, it can be a uh, very narrowly tailored exception, but tha- that's our request today. And, uh, I know that the Planning Commission, um, yeah, didn't really have the power, uh, to, to do that, but the board does have the power to do that today. And I think, um, when weighing the competing interest that the just outcome is to, uh, finally grant his license to Mr. Monav and, uh, let him move on with his life and earn a living and take care of his family.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay.
I'm quite sure Mr. I, I think Mr. Monav is there. I think he has some words he, he'd like to say. And I think, I know Mr. Blanco is there too.
Well, we, we use up the ten minutes for that specific, but we can move into, uh, public comment.
Okay.
There wasn't any other kind of quote, other side presentation, correct? Right. So op- open to public comment. We'll start in the room.
My name is Scott Simpson. I'm the opposition. Uh, I live on Oak Branch Road and my, my family and I built two homes there in the late nineties. We've been there since. My current lower property line is the grow on Coffin Road. This grow would be my front yard on my property line. That was a really nice story that you just said there, but, um, there was really no fact to that. Uh, the homes that are beyond where Mr. Monav's grow would be. Our lifestyles would be destroyed. Our smells and our sights and everything else would be destroyed. Now, I know this group is really big on the catchphrase and the not in my backyard and all that stuff, but I know there are laws and there are codes and there are things like that, but there are also human matters here at play. I've been there for twenty-five years and I love my home and I plan on staying there as long as I can. Um, and the idea that this would in no way affect us is absolutely false. It makes me wonder if the lawyer has ever even been to the site. Uh, this would be right in the front of the property. It would affect not just myself. It would be seen from the local roadways. It would be smelled from the nearby neighbors. Um, I would also like to pose that since we're working with about, it seems like it happened around kind of dates. I would just go ahead and throw it out there that I believe we started our opt-out prior to that being in the queue as well. Uh, Mr. Gogan asked about that. Um, so ultimately, the fact that I'm standing here and just took three or four hours off of work to try to keep a cannabis grow out of a place that's called an opt-out grow area is very bizarre to me, but I realize that's the way the laws work. I just wanted to put a human face on this and let you know that this grow would destroy the property values of two places. It would destroy the lifestyles of at least two places. Actually, there's a third home being built as well, which would be probably within a stone's throw of the grow. Uh, they're not here, but I know that they did submit letters to the board. So, uh, that's about all I had to think. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment in the room?
Hello, everyone. Esteemed supervisors in the presence of the Planning Department and Cannabis Division. My name is Stefan Monav and I'm owner of Fort Ten Oak Branch Road in Lewiston. I want to start chronologically with the facts concerning all the injustice ongoings which happened through all that process of actively seeking a cannabis license on my property in Lewiston. I had a dream and that dream was about to leave with my family in this wonderful county and to get a cannabis license so I can build my dream farm. In March twenty twenty, I found the perfect place for that. Beautiful land, egg zoning, privacy, great sun exposure, good source of water and a place I can call home. Before I start any purchasing process, I went to the planning department so I can ask such a competent authority if that property matched all the requirements to obtain a cannabis license. They told me that the property is outside the opt-out zone, so they assured me that I can get a license there easily. Based on that, I purchased the property and here's where all, all my struggle starts. I purchased a property in March twenty twenty, a year we're all going to remember because of pandemic. After that, the, the county closed due to COVID nineteen for about eight months or so. After a couple of months, the county came out with a statement that said they will no longer accept new applications. The only way in that time to get a license was to purchase CCL number from somebody and to transfer it on your property. So that's what I did. I purchased an inactive license in that time and I had an agreement with the seller. If the county process and approve the transfer of that license on my property, I have to pay it. And that was happened. The county approved the transfer of CCL two oh eight to my property on thirtieth of November, twenty twenty. So I paid the license to the seller with all my savings and I even borrowed money from family and friends. I assume in that time there was a pressure to the county from outside factors. They do not accept the transfer and do not approve the license. But Mary Beth did approve the license and I guess she did it because she knew that it wasn't fair what they was doing to me. And hereafter, and after a week from my transfer was approved, the county accepted on moratorium for inactive licenses to not be transferable anymore. So that's how they was trying to play me. They was ignoring me, ignoring me and ignoring me. At least two months, I was going every morning in the front of the planning department and I was trying to submit the transfer application. I was sending emails to them with no response until Mary Beth accept, decide to accept the transfer and to do something right and to not play a county games. After the license was transferred, transferred to my property successfully, I, I went to the planning department and I asked for CCL two oh eight.
Excuse me, your, your time is up. If you have just a couple of more seconds, I can let you wrap up. But your, your ten minute time was used by your attorney, so you only have three minutes in public comment.
Really?
So if you, if you have a few more seconds, I, I don't wanna...
I have 10 minutes also?
No.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm sorry. I urge the board to reconsider the county decision and explore ways to address concerns while still allowing for responsible cannabis operation in Lewiston. Let's work together to find solutions that benefit our community as a whole. Let us not be defined by fear or prejudice, but by our ability to adopt, evolve, and make decisions that will shape a better future for Lewiston and for 20 County. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hi, esteemed board of supervisors. My name is Kaiman Georgiev, friend of Stefan Monov. I have been a part of his life journey since day first he bought his dream farm. In the beginning, he was so excited and motivated telling me how he's going to raise his kids here in Trinity. We have connection with the nature mother, earth, and finally we'll be able to enjoy, enjoy the life as legal in full-term growers' life. He turned in his application like everyone else, and from there start the real hell. Being misleded, the whole county request from him, a whole bunch of paperwork to get it in compliance as a SEQA and so on, other fees and forms. Again, after he got in total debt with the bank and all his finances, they told him he will probably will not be able to get his growing license due to the opt-out in that area. Now, where all these guys were when they were requesting for documents and fees before, if they knew, he will never get it. And now when it's all falling apart and he's on the verge to go emotionally cracked and financially broken, it's your turn, guys, to decide really, do you want to keep young people in that area to contribute to the local economy with their craft and exactly what they love to do? Or you want everyone out of here being miserable and eventually turn that place to ghost county? Really think twice before you decide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tom Blanco, Doug the City, not an attorney today. Uh, this is not my case, but however I've been following it, I saw the planning commission. I hope, um, you all had the opportunity to see that planning commission. Um, I, I wish we didn't have the difficult decision in front of you today. And in fact, uh, I'm gonna start by saying what I think you should do, and, and then I'll explain why instead of the opposite, which I usually do. And I think wha- what I want you to do is say, hey, let's give this guy a chance. He relied on what the county told him. Right or wrong, it's what it sounded like was right to him. He put money into it, he put effort into it. Uh, I don't like the decision in front of you. So what I would like to see is more options for you. And those options were, were into like, oh, this is what the ordinance says, this is what the law says, and, you know, he wants this and opposition wants that. What we're talking about is a community. The, the opt-out is a feature of a community as it is. I feel like this conversation merits a community conversation. So I would ask that this be sent back to planning for further findings, uh, after a workshop, where we get more than three minutes with members of community to discuss whether this one license on 30 acres of ag land, that's flat, that has a ground well, uh, frustrates the purposes of this, uh, opt-out zone? Or is there a manner where there can be certain conditions or certain something? Let's explore that in a conversation rather than make you have to say, oh, yes, oh, no. That's a tough decision. Um, if you do have to do it, I say, say yes. Uh, if you don't, let's get some more information in front of you. I understand this opt-out. There's no question that people in the community have fought hard for this opt-out. This is one of those parcels on a fringe part of that opt-out that is, it's large, it's zoned ag, it's flat, it doesn't need surface water. Um, I think there's some room there to work something out, but I, I think it merits a conversation. I think our planning commission, uh, wished they had more options. So I'd like to see it sent back to find some more findings and maybe have them suggest some options. And if the options are, we're right back here again, so be it. But at least let's explore it. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Commissioner, members of the board. My name is Elia. I'm from Lewiston. Um, I'd like to weigh in on the, um, this issue. Of course, I'm not the opposition. Uh, the thing what I witnessed in the, um, planning commission was a little bit absurd, and excuse my language, I'm sort of fresh off the boat kind of thing, you know? So I might use sometimes the harsher language when I, uh, what I feel. So, um, there is standard phrases planning commissions or certain members of the commissions use, like, um, the applicant knew before he would get the license, he should have never put the blade on the soil and all this blah, 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 blah. It just kind of, it's so many times it's been repeated, and, uh, it's just kind of getting old, and it's not the issue in this specific case. In this specific case, there was nothing done, absolutely nothing, um, before the license were issued or license were never issued, but yeah. Um, I feel that, um, it's, uh, gross negligence on the part of the county to, um, drag it for two years or so. And it's also negligence for the, uh, opposition, uh, to drag the, um, opt-out and let people get in there. Um, one more thing, uh, the, um, Ms. Margaret mentioned that the planning commission and you guys were going through the conflict of interest kind of training sort of thing. I feel it has to be, um, a little bit extra for the planning commission, cause it seems like the decisions are very biased against, of course, against cannabis community. Um, that's about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina, and I'm here to support, uh, Stefan Monov. So first, I want to mention how much struggle he went through with this situation. His family completely destroyed, his wife and kid. They had to move back to Europe because they struggled financially a lot, and he cannot support his family here. Second, as we know, one of the Stefan's opponent is a winery. So according to United States Centers for Diseases Control and Prevention, cannabis is harmful, less har- harmful than alcohol, both for consumer and for the community. And this is like, for me, no sense that the winery complaining a lot about the cannabis in the neighborhood. Third, Stefan's application has been accepted before opt-out zone had been, uh, extended. But even after the county had been, uh, had been asking him to do a lot of stuff, which he did. Yes, it was a mess that time, we know about this, but why Stefan have to be the victim of this mess? So I really hope that you guys going to make decision based on the moral and on the facts and not on the possible personal relationship here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none other in the room. Do we have any online public input?
I have a raised hand that says iPhone. There's no name. I'm gonna lower their hand, and then if they put it back up. Hello?
Looks like there's a couple now.
Uh, Chris.
Ah, there we go. Chris Williams, Weverville. The processing of cannabis licenses has never been an equitable process. Mistakes have been made as a result for not having processes in place, bending to the will of those in opposition to the program, COVID, lawsuits, bare-bones staffing, relief. Could think about it, it, it probably happened. Mr. Monov is a victim of circumstance, and it has cost him dearly. If the county office was still processing his license, which it sounds by, from what everyone has said, they were, then that is a good faith indication that the county considered this a viable license. Otherwise, their actions were cruel and unusual, and I think falls into the realm of being economically abusive. So please approve this license, uh, to continue its journey as it is just and it is equitable. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Marina?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
Hello? Oh, okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, hi there, my name is Marina Marin. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you. Please continue. She may have her speaker turned off.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I think, I, I think we are both trying to speak, and there is some issue.
Me too.
Okay, so, okay, let's start one by one. Who's speaking now?
You are.
Okay, Sonia. Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Sonia, and I'm here today to advocate for Stefan. He followed all the applications, as we know already, but however, there was a critical missing piece, um, the opt-out area. And unfortunately, Stefan wasn't informed about it. The lack of transparency led to Stefan's application being shut out of the process entirely, which is frankly very unfair. And as we know, um, there were a lot of issues with the opt-out zones. Um, few of them are like, uh, did everything, the zones seems very unclear, and Stefan wasn't given a fair chance to be informed. Secondly, these zones, uh, can unfairly target existing or pending licenses like Stefan's, who were caught in a sudden rule change. And of course, um, as we all know, there were a lot of, um, a lot of cannabis audience, which were very inconsistent with the county, and this could be why Stefan fell through the cracks. The bottom line is that he deserved the license. He played by the rules, and he shouldn't be penalized for a communication error. I believe that by granting Stefan his license, you show your value clear, your value clear communication and your consistent rules and fairness. Let's not punish someone for a mistake they didn't make. Also, I just want to really quick to address the other concern. I honestly believe that nowadays, it's like modern cult- cultivation techniques and today's cannabis cultivation utilize, utilize advanced odor control technologies like carbon filters and on, and this significantly can reduce any potential for odor, for outdoor odors, as the Stefan's neighbor was saying. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Marina?
Hello?
Hello? Good afternoon, everyone. Marina Marin is talking. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, Marina, please continue.
Hello?
Let's get here. Uh, Marina, can, if you can hear us, please continue.
Maybe there's a bit of a delay.
Hello?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, can you continue?
Okay, I'm so sorry. I'm calling from, my name is Marina Marin, and I'm Stefan's wife. And I'm not sure something is wrong with the connection, but I'm, I'm gonna try my best right now. So, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Marina Marin, and I'm Stefan's wife. Um, I'm calling to support Stefan and to say that I'm very familiar, of course, with the whole case and the, everything that he's been passing through, actually, the, me, him, the whole other family, our kids too. Um, he was like, I just don't understand if it was impossible from the very beginning to get a license, uh, why we were receiving all the time, uh, documentation that asking us to do more about the process, like to do the whole SEQA and, uh, all other paperwork that is like to encourage us to do everything else necessary for the licensing process over the time. Once again, I'm asking you, please think wisely tonight before you make any decision, and please, uh, give us a chance to...
I think we lost her.
Okay, well, we can remember that she has that much time left if she appears back.
Bosco?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Hi, my name is Bosco, I'm from Javik. Um, I'm located in Junction City. I'm friend of Stefan and Marina, and, uh, I've been with them with all this case and everything that happened. I'm very familiar also with the site where this, uh, license was to be issued and everything. And, I mean, and there is not much to say, like a lot of people already said, pretty much everything. Uh, I just wanna ask you to, you know, think wisely on all this case and how much it all took on all their family, and they're having all the requirements that being required. I just wanna say one thing about the site where this grow supposed to be, that the opposition, the neighbor from the opposition was stating. Uh, I've been on that site several times, and, uh, the, the land is massive and it's not visible from the road. And from that spot, I cannot see any houses around. And also, one more thing, I mean, we're living in 2024, and cannabis is spread pretty much in most of the states, in, in the states, in our country, and especially in California. So I don't make really a big difference between tomatoes and, uh, and the cannabis plant, and I don't know why the people are taking it as a big deal. Uh, also, there is all, uh, advanced equipment, you know, for growing this plant, uh, so it can kill the odor and the smell and everything else. I think that Stefan did his part, so now you guys are to do yours, and, um, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you so much for hearing me out.
Thank you.
iPhone?
Hi there, you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is George, and I'm friend of Stefan. And I just wanna say, I think Stefan deserved to be granted with the license in order to work and provide for his family. He has followed all, he has followed and done all things that are necessary to acquire the license, so please make a good decision and grant him with the license. Thank you.
Lori?
Uh, good afternoon. This is Lori Williams in Lewiston, and full disclosure, I do reside in the opt-out area and was very much involved in the process of securing the opt-out. Um, based on my recollection, uh, Kim Hunter, who was the former director of cannabis, uh, during the hearings, uh, stated clearly that there were six applicants, at least, that were in the queue and had submitted applications or transfers into this area. And I, I just wanna point out, there's, I, I'm looking at the screen, and there's three supervisors and there's three supervisors still on the board that were involved in the vetting and decision-making process when it came to a unanimous vote for the urgency opt out to be approved. One other applicant who was trying to, or was in the middle of a transfer, ended up suing the county over the urgency opt out. And that was Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 21 CV144. And they were unsuccessful in getting a permit or a license in our opt out after the fact. So that property is still sitting vacant right now. Also, you know, there have been numerous requests for an exception to be made. And, you know, I, I know the situation is unfortunate for the applicant, but I, I personally feel you would be opening Pandora's box by making such a decision. I also just wanna point out that we as community members didn't have any cannabis farms in this valley. And one day we had two without any notice. I say this over and over. We didn't receive notice they were being approved. We didn't receive notice that we had appeal rights. They were just there. And, and there were three of them at one time and we're down to two. And only those two licensed farms met the criteria to continue operating in the soft out area. So I would ask you, please do not make an exception. As painful as it is to make such a hard decision, I, I'm asking you not to make an exception. And to honor the neighbors' requests, we submitted a letter with a lot of signatures and those signatures are all the people who live closest to this property. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trinity Alps Cannabis Farm?
Hi, Board Chair. This is Matt Jefferson, Coffee Creek. I don't know, I'm not gonna get in the weeds, but I'm just gonna say I do support home-based agriculture. I think it's something that's really good for our county. So I would vote that you would approve this license. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.
I have no other raised hands.
Okay. Bring this back for board discussion or any follow-up questions?
Is this license currently going through review process?
I assume that question was for me. No. With that March denial letter, essentially the, you know, couple-year-old application and the appendixy that was submitted were denied and are not being processed currently.
Thank you.
We have in your backup document, it says that subsequently, the project application was denied by then Planning Director Kim Hunter. Do we have a date on that? And do we have documentation of that?
If you give me a few minutes, I'll search through the hundred or so pages and try and come up with that answer. I don't remember it off the top of my head.
And which, what is it you're looking for again?
Denial by Kim Hunter after June 15, 2021.
Are you talking about the, like, there was a couple of places where that happened, the appendixy?
Well, the appendixy was, if I'm reading this correctly, the appendixy would have been submitted after the denial letter was given by Kim Hunter. But that's why there's no date.
So it looks like it references Attachment 9. Let me try and find that.
August 19, 2021? August 19, 2021. All right, August 19th.
Explanation Director by... Directive by Board of Supervisors 7302.
Refund is approved.
Yeah, on the, there's the one page that it is actually an email from Bella that, that indicates that it looks like previous Director Kim Hunter formally denied the transfer application via email on August 19, 2021 and refunded all application fees to the applicant. Can you use your mic, please? Sorry.
So in the, in the Planning Commission staff report, it's Attachment 10. I apologize that in that staff report, the attachments are listed incorrectly. But yeah, August 19, 2021, there is a refund slash cancellation request per Board Direction provided on 73121. This license application may not be issued due to urgency ordinance 315A50. It's from Kim Hunter.
So you're using an August 19th date, but I'm seeing a July 30th?
That was when the direction of the board was from July 30th.
So we would go with Board Direction date?
I'm not sure what date we're trying to...
Go ahead, I didn't answer my...
I was just wondering, I just wanted a date because it wasn't in this. I can't open the whole backup packet on my phone and my computer doesn't fit up here. So I'm just looking for dates at this point.
Yeah, on page 615 is where I see, I think, what Supervisor Cox is pointing to, which is a refund cancellation request that is dated 7302021. And that's at least part of the record.
Right, so I, I see that the refund cancellation request, if I'm looking at the same document, is stamped August 19, 2021, but references the 73121 date.
Yeah, that's what I saw too. So...
Yeah, she handwrote the 730, but the stamp is August 19.
Yeah, and then down, down below it says Directive by Board of Supervisors 7302021. Yeah.
Thank you. Didn't catch it. Anything else?
I'm not right this moment.
Okay. Thank you. Any board discussion?
And I, I would like clarity on the transfer portion in testimony. There was a place where...
Like where the transfer was approved?
Yeah, in other words, there was testimony provided that it was clear that a license couldn't be issued in this area. So a license was sought on another property with intent to transfer. And I would like to understand that better.
But I don't think that was even just based on that area, that there were no new licenses being issued in Trinity County at that time. You had to have a license that was already, and transferred to you because they weren't issuing new, they weren't accepting new applications.
Yeah, so it wasn't, didn't have to do with the area. It was just the only way you could get a license at that point was to get one that had already been offered up. Is that what you mean?
So purchasing a license that, from somebody else, was the only way to get one at that time?
That's my understanding, yes.
And then the, the thought process would be if that license can be acquired, then it can be transferred in to the area.
Because any existing license at that time was still able to be transferred to a new location.
And I guess the date I would like to find is the date that the opt out process first showed up in kind of the environment.
If you give me a minute, I can check with staff, but I do not have that.
Okay, yeah, that is fine. Thanks.
When the opt out group submitted it to planning or when it brought for the board?
Correct, submitted to planning.
When the application for the opt out, the petition for the opt out was received?
Yes.
I'm gonna step outside and make...
Yeah, I know, that's not part of our backup material.
Via text.
Yeah, as I say, but probably if Lori's still online, she probably would remember when, but we can let staff officially get that information instead of...
To reopen public comment.
Yeah, right. Okay, anything else while we're waiting?
What we're talking about dates, counsel? What was the date when we ended our program because of our court order?
I'd have to look that up. Give me a moment.
All right, let's have everybody busy.
When I asked, I asked something similar to that of Drew this weekend. I said, please confirm the effective date that our cannabis program was changed to require appendixes, et cetera, prior to approval. And again, I know counsel kind of explained, well, it was already always required, but there, we changed the rules about when review was. And he said the transition plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors on 10192021. And he would consider that to be the effective date related to the appendixy submission requirement. Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
Because prior to that, our entire program got shut down by a court order.
The shutdown.
That, and then we had the... It was, it was September-ish. And then we also, then we had extension letters, which caused us a headache later on, all that, if we could have it. It seems like it was early September.
September... It is early September. I'm looking at an unsigned document that's September 3rd, but I'm trying to get the signed document.
I believe I was thinking September 5th, but I could be wrong.
But also of 2021?
Yes. 2021, yes. September 13th is the filed date on the order after hearing.
Okay.
And then, so it was about a month later that the board approved the transition plan. Sounds like from, at least from Drew's note. Okay, gotcha.
What was that first date you mentioned, the date for the... September 14th, 2021.
I hear you guys clarified the other question while I was on the phone. Based on documentation in the digital file, what it looks like is there was some communication from the board to Kim Hunter that specified that the application for the Lewiston expansion was received on April 19th, 2021, and then additional documentation received on 6421.
And then Drew, did CCL 208 get an extension letter?
I believe that it was transferred before the UO letters were sent out, because they didn't start getting sent out until the beginning of 21, based on my recollection.
When was our, when was our shutdown? Was it?
Program shutdown happened in September 21.
Of 21, and that's what I'm saying. Did, did they get an extension letter?
So the extension letters went out starting in January 21 till about mid-year.
January, so they went out before we were shut down?
They went out before they were shut down, basically halting a full licensure cycle for anyone that say was renewing in January 21 through January 22. The UO extension letter specified that it was shut down, you know, that the license was only good until September 9th, I think it was, or September 21.
So I was just trying to figure out if we had any documentation based on that, that this was actually at that point an issued license. Because if it wasn't, if it was an issued license at that time, they would have received an extension letter, correct?
Right, so specific to, you know, this project and this appeal, the license, I think it's clear that was never issued for this new location. CCL 208 was previously active, but it was transferred on November 19th, 2020. The license never issued, so going into 21, they wouldn't have qualified for an extension letter because they needed to have an, essentially an active license to, and a pending renewal during that calendar year renewal cycle.
Okay.
But the license was successfully transferred from wherever it was purchased from and transferred into this Lewiston site on 11192020.
The application was transferred.
The application and the, so the, the notarized release form. So that, in the, in that timeframe, the transfer process, there was no transfer application. There was a release form releasing the interest from CCL 208 from the previous applicant to Mr. Monav. And he also submitted in, you know, a cultivation license application at that time.
So when, so when, if this helps, when, when we say the transfer was complete, it was the transfer of the ownership of that license, not a transfer into that, onto that site?
Right, well, if, when we use the terminology transfer, it becomes confusing because essentially what happened, at the best that I can understand during that timeframe, was the interest was released from the previous applicant to Mr. Monav, but the license was never issued. So there, there was no formal transfer paperwork like there, like that exists currently.
So when somebody purchases a license from somebody else, it's still tied to the original site? Or it's not tied necessarily to any site?
Yeah, as I understand, and I could try and dig through the backup, but as I understand it, yes, the, the transfer basically released the interest from the previous applicant to Mr. Monav related to that CCL number, which I think the program was at or close to capacity, which is why they, you know, there was a moratorium on new applications. So at that time, if you wanted to get a license, you needed to transfer one of the pre-existing licenses either to a new location or into the new applicant's name. Sorry, I used the terminology transfer.
Challenging. I'm looking for the date that the holder of CCL 208 asked for that license to now apply to the Lewiston property.
So there are two separate forms. One is the release form and one is the new application. Both of those were received by the Planning Department on November 19, 2020. The release form being giving, I don't know how to pronounce the former applicant's last name. I don't know that it matters, but the former applicant to Mr. Monav and then an application to set that CCL 208 on the APN in question, which then became part of the Lewiston expansion opt out subsequently.
Okay. How then would this be? How then would this be term determined or labeled by folks to be an exception?
Uh, are you referring to?
Mr. Monav's attorney. Asked for an exception, even if narrowly detailed, he stated.
I, I, obviously I can't speak on his behalf, but. I would gather that what he's referring to is an exception to the language in the Lewiston. Expansion opt out ordinance, which states something to the effect of active and issued licenses. So the exception, as I understand the concept that was posed would be, you know, as, as you all discussed previously, related to opt outs. Would be that. Rather than saying it only applies to active issued licenses, it would apply to. Any pending applications that were received prior to the submission of. You know, the opt out petition request or some, something to that effect.
So, can you refer me to the page number that provides the language on the opt out? Ordinance, do you have that fast or somebody else does?
I, I usually don't use the PDF version, so I don't get the hundreds and hundreds of pages.
Yeah.
But I can sure try and find the.
I'll try to search the PDF.
What, you were looking for the opt out ordinance, Jill? So. I just have it as part of attachment nine to the staff report, but I have it if you want me to.
That's okay.
Something specifically, it's. It's after the application forms from Mr. Monav.
So I have on page six seventy two, ordinance number three fifteen dash eight five one. And Board of Supervisors hereby ordain. Um, and it talks about. I think, did we adopt both, the board adopt both the Rush Creek Estates and Lewiston Expansion opt out areas together, I think, right? So this is probably where it starts.
And yeah, the attachment before that is just the first extension of the urgency ordinance.
Okay. So then it says on, on number eight, three eight, existing licenses within. Opt out area shall be allowed to modify their operation with proper approvals. If it does not increase the intensity cultivation footprint, expansion of existing operations. Shall only be allowed when it can be demonstrated to the satisfaction of the county that there would be no or minimal physical impact from the expansion. Existing licensees shall be allowed to transfer their license to a new owner in the event of a transfer of ownership of the property. And or to another property outside of the opt out area. Existing licenses may not transfer their license to another property within the opt out area. Oh, this one is specifically about Rush Creek because it says. Unless subsequently modified by the board, this shall serve as a permanent prohibition on new commercial cannabis activities within Rush Creek Cannabis Opt Out Area. Okay, here's the findings for Lewiston. Sorry, I was reading the wrong one. They were, they were together, so. Uh, now I'm on page six seventy three now. Uh, let's see. Similar, but slightly different language, uh, existing licenses, licensees. Within the Lewiston Expansion Opt Out Area shall be allowed to modify their operation with proper approvals if it does not increase the intensity. Or cultivation footprint of the operation, expansion of existing operations within the opt out area shall only be allowed when it can be demonstrated to the satisfaction of the county. That there would be no or minimal physical impact from the expansion, expansion of the cultivation footprint shall not be allowed. Stacking of cultivation licenses shall not be allowed. Existing licensees shall be allowed to transfer their license to a new owner in the event of a transfer of ownership of the property. And or to another property outside of the opt out area, existing licensees may not transfer their license to another property within the opt out area. Unless subsequently modified by the board, this shall serve as a permanent prohibition on new commercial cannabis activities within the Lewiston Expansion. Cannabis opt out area.
And the language that I, you know, took note of. As weighing the most heavily on, on this whole topic is number eight. Approved existing licensees within the Lewiston Expansion Cannabis Opt Out Area as of June fifteenth twenty twenty one that are. Compliant, active and in good standing shall be allowed to continue to operate at their existing location.
And that's, I think, it's back to your original question about why is it a exception, it's because it was not, it did not meet what. And then I take from, you know, what has been presented is the exception would be, uh, if granted, would be because of. The circumstances surrounding the applicant's efforts to try to get it in the duration of time that took place and. Timing and everything else. That's something? No, just readjusting, okay. Anyone down here?
Could I ask counsel to refresh my memory? So we had a similar situation. And the transfer was denied and that transfer went to court and the court upheld. The, um, decision to not allow that transfer in because of our ordinance and the.
That is correct, yes.
I don't know there was a transfer.
Wasn't a transfer, yes, that's what I'm hesitating. But it was the same concept of the discretionary act of the board to make a determination within the parameters of what your code says. They determined that was appropriate. You did not have to reissue the license if you found it not compliant.
I would be willing to make a motion if we're ready for that, but Jill looks like she might still be concerned. Do you have further questions?
More discussion can go on.
Motion that we uphold the director's decision to deny the license. So we.
We're just, just uphold the director's decision, planning commission's decision, which one are we?
Okay, I would make a motion that we deny the appeal.
That would be appropriate.
Okay.
We have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Ongoing discussion?
For clarification, uh, we do need findings, the, um, planning department proposed findings, which I have turned into a formal findings. Um, if you would like to make any changes to what the planning. Department presented in, which is in your agenda, you're welcome to, or I'm happy to read what I've memorialized based on the conversation.
Would you please?
Uh, number one, the Lewiston Expansion Cannabis Opt Out Area was first adopted by urgency ordinance. Number three, one, five, eight, five, zero by the Board of Supervisors on June fifteenth twenty twenty one and extended. July thirtieth twenty twenty one per ordinance three, one, five, dash, eight, five, one. Trinity County cannot issue cannabis license on APN number zero, two, five, one, eight, zero, zero, three, zero. Dash, zero, zero, zero located at four eighty Oak Run Road, Lewiston, California nine, six, zero, five, two. Pursuant to ordinance three fifteen, five fifty one, section four, item five, other factors that support the exclusion. Of new cannabis activities from Lewiston Expansion Area include. Land use considerations, including small parcel size and density, community character considerations. Including the primary residential nature of the area, unique geological conditions, including seat topography and other public input. Including significant neighborhood support for a cannabis opt out area. Pursuant to, to ordinance three, one, five, eight, five, one, section four, item eight. Uh, proved existing licenses within the Lewiston Expansion Cannabis Opt Out Areas as of June fifteenth twenty twenty one. That are compliant and in good standing shall be allowed to continue to operate at their existing location. After research and confirmation with county council, staff has determined that ordinance three, one, five, eight, five, one does not provide a pathway. For licensers for expanded applications that are not formally approved. Or license issued before the adoption of the Lewiston Expansion Opt Out Area. Therefore, the cannabis decisions directors didn't, the cannabis decision director. Denied the pending application associated with CL zero oh two, uh, in reference to the subject parcel.
And so what I'm hearing there is an emphasis on the completion, not the initiation.
Believe it's expansion versus.
Well, the, I think the idea that the license had to be complete, not just an application, we had to have an issued license. As per that ordinance, and that's what I, um, I don't see a way that we can legally. Find that it meets the criteria when. It's pretty obvious to me that it, it, it just doesn't make it, so. Um, I do agree with those findings with one, um, change. Uh, you might have just misread it, but it should say Oak Ranch Road, I believe. You said Oak Run when you read it.
It says Oak Ranch, that was a miss, sorry, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, further discussion? Please.
I just want the folks to know that, um. Decisions like this are very difficult to make and, um, this is just a series of un- unfortunate events and. Um, I, I appreciate the concerns on both sides of, of this and. You know, you have to dive into what, to what happened and look at it seriously and then make really hard decisions about that, so. This decision isn't coming, um, coming off of me without deep consideration.
Looks like there's no further discussion.
I, I would just make one other statement because it just circles back in my mind to, you know, two items ago. When we said, are we going to ask our planning department to take extra time, spend extra money to do a deeper dive before we. Put another ordinance on the books that later may cause implications and problems. And, um, you know, we're still paying the price for that oversight, oodles and noodles of months. Yet years ago. And, and it causes difficulties like this and where we have had conversations among this board. To Supervisor Gogan's earlier point, we had talked about, well, what date was this submitted, what date was that submitted? Which was why I wanted to see the language. The language in this one said it had to be completed by then and to Supervisor Frazier's point, we can't. We can't change the wording in that ordinance and it would be illegal for us to then have a ruling that is outside. What now is a legality on our books. So agreement with, yeah, it's painful and it's hard and to justify, um, you know, why were communiques. Sent from the planning department that would reference something still, you know, pending or hopeful. Um, I can't answer that. There is no good answer, I think, to that. It's the. True definition of a dilemma.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's, it, it is very unfortunate. It is clear to me that. This doesn't meet the criteria for being approved based on. The legal standing of that application and the legal requirements of the opt out or limitations of the opt out. What is the gray area that I think everybody was focused on was. Could it and should it have been approved and active at the time? But it wasn't, and that's what we're left with. So. Okay, if there's no further discussion, call for the vote.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Chairman Luth Wiler.
Aye.
Next item is four point four, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance amending the Trinity County Code, section seventeen, four, three, zero, five, zero. Pertaining to commercial cannabis cultivation regulations.
Good afternoon, Chair Supervisor Strupulani, Cannabis Division Director. I did take note this morning that the draft ordinance was not attached to the backup. So I have nine copies here that I will give to Ashley for you all to see.
Thank you.
Counsel? Just a question, since this wasn't in the backup material for public consumption, is that a problem that we have to delay?
I would recommend that, um, if, if, unless they're minor changes, but if there's anything that would take a moment to digest. It would be recommended to make sure that's published for the public, since you are making significant changes.
Well, I'm not, um, saying about changes or not, I'm just saying it wasn't in the public. Documentation for the public to digest and comment on, and so I'm just wondering, can we legally, ethically, whatever. Proceed without it having been shared in the public documentation?
I think that would, um, be, uh, ethically questionable.
Okay. So, which would mean we would be able to bring it back. We don't have any special noticing for this, so we could just bring it back to the next meeting?
I recommend that you continue it to the next meeting, so we don't have to do any additional noticing, just get it on the next agenda.
There any?
Agreed.
Conversation, okay. So, uh, a motion for that is what we would need?
Yes, please.
A motion to continue this until the April second meeting.
I will make a motion to continue item four point four to April second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Should it state for reasons of. Documentation being supplied to the public?
It doesn't need to, but, but staff will make a note to add that in, so it's published seventy two hours in advance.
Okay, okay, my second includes that.
Okay, no discussion?
Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Chairman Luth Wiler.
Aye.
I will still receive that document if we're able to.
Okay, now that we did that, counsel, before we did that, did we need to open that item up to public comment?
That is what the interim CAO asked the same question, um, for a continuance technically. But it's your pleasure if there's anyone in the room that you wanted to hear from, so they didn't have to come back, you're welcome to, but for continuance, no.
And I apologize, I expected this to be an item that we were going to, um, go through and so Ruby Fiera was in the room earlier. And I let her know that I didn't think we were going to be ready for her for two hours, so thanks, Chris.
We'll, we could take a break and wait for her, could we? Okay. Okay.
Okay. Uh, so we'll shift, oh, we'll go ahead with, uh, item four point five. Work of the board, approve the board's response to the grand jury report, twenty twenty three Trinity County Grand Jury Report Solid Waste Report. And, uh, do we have someone that was going to present this?
I can read it.
To read it, but if there's the same thing you want to present about it.
I do want to say that I was very happy in the process of reviewing this with CAO Tut Hill to see that a majority of the concerns. Had already been addressed or were, uh, scheduled to rapidly be addressed. I do want to say that I have noticed a couple typographical errors and I would like to have the chance to fix those before they go. Before this gets, uh, sent out, that's okay. Uh, I would appreciate that, but, um, may I just touch on a couple?
Please.
Of the items. I, I actually would like to just kind of, I won't read it in full, but I just want to touch on a couple of them. I, we're all very happy for those of us who utilize the, um. The, the transfer sites that the, the bin replacement is, is fully underway with just a, a few more. Um, or just time palm, I believe, to be done. Um, the awareness around making sure that our folks, uh, at the transfer sites. Either have satellite phone where necessary or cell phone. The awareness around making sure that our folks uh, at the transfer sites either have satellite phone or necessary or cell phone uh, reimbursement. When they need to use their personal cell phone is something that we suggested and agreed with to make sure that they have the ability to communicate any emergencies. And then also the importance of having first aid equipment on hand was something that was noticed as a a deficiency. And that is something that is being readily addressed um, and taken care of to make sure that our staff is is safe on site. And has the ability to communicate any emergencies. Both of those were rather important. I think uh, all, everything was important, but um, the protection of our staff is is very necessary. And then also just a plea to the communities at large. One of the findings was regarding our our kiosk and our inability to keep them, you know, safe or store supplies or or hold anything in them overnight. Because people break into them and destroy them on a regular basis, and it's something that we obviously can't um, keep up with. So anytime anyone sees um, activity or or knows of of anything that's going on, please make sure you report that so that we can ma- maintain our kiosk and our shade areas for our staff. But I was, I was pleased to hear um, the responses from the department and from C O Tuttail that many of these things were rapidly being addressed or had already been addressed by the time of our interview, so.
He was very proactive in helping us get these things done. I think they're all done by August thirty first, maybe the la- the last one.
Yes.
But again, um, you know, the one thing that we we can't cure is the vandalism part, which happens to all of them. But it also is going to probably over time um, increase your bill. Happen to add, you know, glass, very expensive glass and a lot of different things to the to kiosks um, around the county. And those things don't come for free, and we'd be doing quite a bit. Um, and as we've kind of banged heads together, myself, Heidi and Trent. We just couldn't come up with anything that was that was good. Mostly because the solid waste spots are in out of the way places, which they have to be. So that's a tough one. If we can get some buy-in from the public, something, it would be very, very helpful. The rest of the stuff, I think we can. We can figure out and got a handle on. That's one we just kept on banging our head against the wall and could not get it. So I think Heidi did a great job, Trent did a great job. Um, worked out fine.
Thank you for the opportunity to represent the board in this response.
I did, I have one question with the two of you is I I noted there were two different uh, letters in there, one from Trent and one from the board. And the one from the board uh, did not address the jury, grand jury's recommendations about staffing associated uh, problems under item twelve, I believe it was, and Trent's did. And so I would didn't know if that was a conscious decision that the board was not going to include that part of the response. I just wanted to be clear.
The response that that we recognized um, in finding number twelve was when a gate attendant is unable to show up for their shift, the transfer site closes to the public, creating hardship on the community. And uh, in discussions, there there's. It it's not viable to hire a floating attendant um, to go wherever someone may have, you know, cold and sick or whatever the reason may be. Predominantly because there's, we don't have the funding to do that. And then if the attendant in Hyam Palm called in and the attendant in Burt Ranch or vice versa, the distance for that floating attendant to a travel is is almost virtually impossible. So the way that we um. The the only way that we can recognize solving that is to make sure that the solid waste department updates its um. Its websites immediately to make sure that if people look before they drive out, that they can see that. And then also to make sure that it's posted on the community uh, Facebook pages, you know, like in Trinity Alerts, whatever. So that people can see that that is readily available. I know for myself, it takes me about um, forty-five minutes to get from my house to my transfer site. And I have arrived there for the um, you know, gate to be closed for a variety of reasons. The buns haven't been dumped or whatever. And that takes a significant amount of fuel with today's fuels cost and then also your time. So just making sure that we have that information out there is the best way that we can solve that problem right now.
To that point, the, like, I'm trying to scroll quickly and good catch, they're different. Should our, so from the C O, the recommendation contains an A and a B with two sub points of how this will be handled versus the one from the board just says, we agree, it is necessary. And I wonder if the board's response should perhaps be modified to contain the detail that the C O's does.
Yes, I'll be happy to adjust that.
I would, I would like that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do want to take the opportunity to thank you both. Um, I've only, well, I've done this twice. But my reports, this was quite lengthy and in depth, and you addressed a a good bit of um, difficulty here. And so I just want to thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for giving us the chance to do it.
Thanks, Grand Jury, for doing a good job presenting the problems that are facing our solid waste.
Okay, well, if there's no more questions, then we can take public comment and then we can have any board discussion motion. So public comment, looks like we have some in the room?
Being on the grand jury for three terms, uh, I like Heidi's statement, and I think that should be in her report.
Which was, sorry?
The one about uh, you know, making sure that's that is posted correctly and that that whole spiel she made should be actually part of the report.
I think it is.
If it is, I haven't read it, so.
Okay.
I I will uh, in response to Supervisor Cox's request and public comment, I will, I will add some depth to my response or our response to finding twelve.
Any other public comment?
I have no race to him.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I would move to approve this document with the addition of uh, the um. Reflection of C O's language on recommendation twelve as Supervisor Carpenter Harris has indicated.
And maybe you might want to include the type correction typos that she.
Oh, yes, and we will certainly have the opportunity to make those adjustments.
Okay, do we have a second?
For discussion. We might not need a lot of discussion, but um, I, and I guess I'll probably be addressing this to counsel somewhat. But is the, is the reason we have the C O's response and the B O S response because the C O is in essence, the department head for that department?
That's correct.
So our our response doesn't have to mirror his entirely. We have to be. We have to have our response. He's responsible for his response.
Understood. Thanks for that clarity. And I didn't realize that that was, I was trying to figure out why there was another one from him, and that does make perfect sense. And I still stand by my request because I think it's a good one, um, but for a different reason. Thank you.
And I'm still finding the second name that much.
Uh, and just one other thing, I'm going to finish my notes and um. Trying to get the language of what we're saying, right? The only other thing I wonder is, did you guys have any conversation about um. Asking staff to to make available a a more push notification process? So like, right now, you're saying, uh, which I love, that, you know, that let's make sure that we get it out on social media and whatever other ways that we can and the recordings and so forth. Um, we, we have um. Code red, where if if there's something going on in your area, you get notified. So I'm just wondering, you know, it would, would it be appropriate to ask staff to set up? Whether it's a text group or an email distribution list or something, but where people say, hey, I'm a frequenter of this solid waste transfer site. And so besides posting, can you send an email? So that it, I know I can look for my emails versus I'm not a Facebook person, or uh, I'm just wondering if that was discussed or if you, what you think about.
No, we did not discuss collecting or creating an email list. However, I know that like, I get an email. I'm sure the rest of you do when a transfer site is not going to be.
Yeah.
Working. Um, and I also know that it comes up on um, the Facebook pages for our community if Burt Ranch is going to be taken out. So something that um, that may be able to be done is, I can't, I'm just thinking about my community taking their stuff to the dump and being asked for their emails so that they can get letters. And the co- the comedy that 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 may ensue from there, but I, no, we did not discuss that, but that's something that we may be able to check into.
I don't even know if it's viable. I mean, some people don't get to their email for days, so it may not be that much help.
And I, I would hate to utilize, I would hate to utilize the community alerts, like forum that's set aside for emergencies. Because I think we shouldn't do that. And I feel like that would be a little excessive, but um, no, we certainly can can explore those ideas. I would imagine that that C O Tuttail would be willing to do that, so.
And do we, do we know, is it just the supervisors received that notification, the email that goes out, or does that go to anybody who wants to sign up to that?
I do not know that answer.
Because that would actually just, if we just ask, hey, if you want to be on that list, add your name. I I don't know.
I am not, excuse me, I'm not sure of the answer to that, but I will make a note.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I'll see if I can get it on the heat for her, if that helps.
I think leaving it to the department to brainstorm their own communication methods with with the community per district makes sense.
Yeah, they know what's works, yeah.
And what issues that they have or availabilities that they have with technology and um, and what staff has available as well.
Okay, so I have motion to approve the letter with the addition of content from the C O's response to item twelve and correction of typos. No further board discussion, we can call the vote.
Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Cox.
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan.
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Aye.
Chairman Luth Wiler.
Aye. Okay, item four point six. Under probation, approve a budget adjustment for fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four for probation asset seizure, Department eight five nine four. Increasing fixed assets by fifty-eight thousand, no general, no impact to the general fund, current cash balance and probation asset seizure. Fund five nine four is one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars and, or one hundred and forty-nine, eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand. One hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. It's late. Late in the day for me to be doing numbers.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board, and I'm very glad to be able to be here today. I'm Ruby Fiera, I'm the Chief Probation Officer. And originally, this was going to be set on consent, and I knew that I wanted to be able to talk to you about this, because I'm really, you know, pleased to be able to be bringing this to our community. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the funds, because that's something that I want to make sure that you understand and public understands that this is not a cost out of general fund. And there are asset forfeiture funds which come out of the proceeds of money or the sale of assets that are brought in from criminal activity. And so there is law that just, that prescribes how this, these funds are um, allocated. And I included that in the backup documentation for you guys. And I'm very passionate about training, and that's something that it's very helpful for our officers, for the safety of our community. You guys have heard me talk before about if you affect how people think, you affect how they behave. In this case, it's the same thing. You know, it's people, it's affecting how they think and their training. And that then affects their performance and their course of their duties. And it creates more successful outcomes for the community that we're involved in situations, situations that we get involved in are rapidly unfolding and sometimes very dangerous for the officers and the community. And I myself have been a field training officer, a field training administrator. I'm on the training committee for the state for the probation departments. And locally, I am on the SHIELD Committee. Uh, SHIELD is a consortium of, it's our three counties of Shasta, Trinity and Tahima. We have nineteen agencies that are law enforcement, fire and emergency medical response. I'm on the executive board of that and make decisions regarding how funds are spent there and what trainings are brought to this region. And and also in this community, I've collaborated with our sheriff's office, our C H P, our marshals. And really wanting to make sure that, as we made decisions about bringing this training platform locally and at the expense that it is, that it could benefit all of us working together in each of their agencies as well. And they're very much supportive of this. I don't know if any of them were online. I would invite them to give comment after and Tim Dobbs comes up and talks a little bit about what the actual system is. And I would just really want you to understand all of that for the background of the foundation of this decision and its utilization of a building and a lot of money. And so I would like to introduce Deputy Chief Tim Dobbs to come up. He is, has background in being an instructor and a trainer in the military, federal probation, county probation, and is Lead Range Master for our department. And he's been the lead for this project. Uh, he'll tell you more of the details of the actual system.
Hello, good afternoon, uh, Chairman, members of the board. Milo, uh, first of all, it's an acronym. I should probably get that out of the way. We love acronyms in law enforcement. Multiple Interactive Learning Objectives is what it stands for. It's essentially a system that allows us to do immersive uh, immersive uh, scenario training that can branch in different directions, kind of like if you're old enough to remember the old choose your own adventure novels. It's very similar to that. It's a video-based system. For us, what it means physically is a projector, a big screen, probably about the size of between the two flags there. Uh, and a P C, a desktop P C that runs the whole thing. Uh, it's hundreds of scenarios, everything from active shooter drills to um, de-escalation. Uh, implicit bias, uh, crisis intervention, mentally ill, uh, crisis intervention. All things that are real hot topics in law enforcement, you know, in California and nationwide. This gives us an opportunity to do that in-house without sending our people to training. And it's the best kind of training there is, and that's not just me saying that. There's evidence backing that. Uh, it's, it's been proven that immersive scenario training is the only training that elicits an emotional response from a trainee. So it's, it's not the same as real life. Nothing can simulate that, but uh, this, these scenario based, these immersive scenarios. And what I mean by immersive is we can run scenarios at our office all day long. If I know I'm walking into an office where my coworkers are pretending to be a couple involved in a domestic violence situation, I'm going to be taking it pretty easy, right? Whereas these scenarios, they're strangers, you don't know what you're walking into. It's, it's very uh. It's a very valuable training resource. We do it once or twice a year, other places. So this would allow us to mostly Shasta College, but this would allow us to do it in-house and um, would allow us to share this system with our community partners. Um, everybody from law enforcement to um, any, like, there's a lot of scenarios at schools dealing with de-escalating children who are amped up. A great tool for officers, but also for school staff. So it's something that we were willing to share right now. We've brought our partners in the law enforcement community on board with us in the discussions. And but it's something that I could see branching out in the future for sure. Allows us to train with our law enforcement partners for uh, on scenarios and kind of see how uh, each other do things before it's real, a real situation. So um. It's also a part of, um, and there's nobody in the Sheriff's Department here, so I'll just go ahead and speak for them without permission. They have what are, they're governed by post, peace officer standards and training. We're not, we're a different organization at the state level, but peace officer standard and training requires a certain amount of what they call perishable skills training every two years. Um, and a lot of departments use the Milo system for that, which allows them to knock out, they could do an eight-hour class and it locally and knock out, there's five domains for perishable skills, they could knock out two or three of them right there in one day and not have to send their people off. So it's a benefit to our Sheriff's Department and uh, D A's office and also some state partners. Uh, at this point, I'll end my spiel there and ask if the board has any questions for me. If they get too high level, though, I can bring her back in.
I'm, I'm curious if there is an estimated cost savings you mentioned uh, without this software, you or whole system, you uh, the sheriff's office, at least all of you, I would assume, have to send out um, for the training. Well, you said the sheriff's office, it's required for probation, it's recommended, correct?
Right, it's not, perishable skills training doesn't apply to probation necessarily, but it's very, it's, we do that kind of training anyway. We do have to do implicit bias training. We do have to do implicit bias training, um, de-escalation, crisis intervention, uh, mandatory reporting, things like that, that we can simulate on this. Uh, so it's a lot of different training programs. I could have probably come up with a number, but it would be pretty arbitrary, to be honest, because it would matter. I don't know the sheriff's department's training rhythm or anything like that, so I would just be, I would just be, you know, guessing.
But safe to say, it would probably be significant.
Significant, especially over the years.
Yeah.
Um, that is, this will be available to us.
Nice.
On that, I'd like to add that this can't completely replace live-fire trainings. It augments a lot of training. Um, so, you know, it's not like we never have to use ammunition again, but it does bring down the cost of ammunition. And also with it being local, we're not doing per diem lunches, we're not doing the gas, we're not doing the time of them being gone as long. And it, it really does, you save on our costs there. And one of the reasons that I felt that this was important, because Reading's not that far away and we do have this available there, um, is that you can't split up your teams when you're so short-staffed. You know, I know I struggle with sending half my staff once a year to one training, the other half the other time of the year. The sheriff's office has the same difficulties and even more with having to run the institution. So in this way, you could bring in smaller groups. And we are also inviting them, our contract includes that we would be able to have people trained to utilize the system. And so I'm not just training my staff to utilize it. We're allowing the sheriff's deputies to come in and be trained so that they can utilize it on their own. The DA's office, the marshals, you know, so that there'll be a good group of people who can do these. And also with the engagement with SHIELD, they've already offered to provide different training manual, or sorry, modules that they've already utilized that are post-certified, that, um, as he spoke about, STC for us, certified. And in general, I try and run the department to meet post standards because a lot of our things do overlap and i- it makes us more defensible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it, I can't give you a number.
Sure.
But it is a benefit for sure.
Mm-hmm. And then the other thing would just be, and not that this is decision-dependent by any stretch of the imagination, but, um, celebration-worthy, I think. My guess is that you've probably had this in your mind for some time and now are being able to move forward with something you've probably wanted. And I'm just curious what that timeframe is. Like, I've wanted this for a year. I have seen how beneficial this would be, I, whatever, just to kind of celebrate the acquisition of something that's been on your radar and now is becoming a reality.
I have been here almost three years and I recall talking to CAO Coons about the possibility of utilizing the building for this.
Nice.
So it's been a long time coming. And I, I actually don't know that the timeframe of when it'll be installed. I know I was working for it this spring, but Dobbs has more of that information.
Yeah, it, it'll take ninety days once the purchase is made, around, uh, thirty days for them to come out here, actually install the system and then train us on it, which they do all as part of the, the, uh, purchase price.
Nice.
Yeah, and I've been working with Milo specifically since it was born and, uh, predecessors to that in the nineties in the service, um, I've, and I've always wanted one. Not to one-up you, chief, but, like, my whole life, probably.
Whatever degree that it is acceptable, I would love the opportunity to see it once it's installed.
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing. It's a, it's a great, a lot of departments use it as a tool to bring the board in and bring community members in, kind of see what they do. Uh, we're not quite, we don't have the big open houses that some of the big, big county departments do where the community come, come in, but that's one of the things they do is let them run scenarios and things. It's a good community development-type relationship, relationship development, uh, tool as well, or can be.
Well, thank you for your vision.
And I just want, oh, did you have something? Go ahead.
Go ahead. I just wanna, um, say that I'm, I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to use your building when you gave me a tour, um, to have, you mentioned these, this hope that you had for this. And so I'm very excited, um, at the possibility of this becoming a reality.
Yeah, and I was saying, Sam, I remember the tour and I was thinking, is this that big area that used to be, uh, for housing? And, and you had talked about that you might want to use it for exercise and training and so forth. Is that the area that we're talking about?
We are still using that area for training and, and we're going to be looking to expand our mats in that area. But the high ceiling became a problem. So what I was sadly informed is the, it's a projector that suspends from the ceiling.
Oh.
They, there's issues with that amount of weight on that long way.
Okay.
And so we'll be, um, utilizing what was the carpeted classroom area. So we'll utilize that area for that piece of the training.
Okay. Well, and as it's been alluded to, I appreciate, uh, especially the, not just the forward-looking and the dedication and persistence to make it happen, but also the, the tremendous collaboration because you're not just talking about something you're doing for your own organization, but how you can partner with all these other groups, you can jointly train, you can, um, help others. So I, I just really appreciate that. We, we all have limited resources, so leveraging them as much as we can is great and I appreciate your leadership. Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll open this to public comment.
I have no raised hands.
See that in the room? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Luthweather?
Aye. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I think at the special meeting, I probably did not do a closed session readout, so I should do that and then we can, uh, move in. So, uh, a readout from closed session from our March fifth meeting. Item six point one, Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-five-E, Public Employee Appointment, County Council. Direction was given to staff. Item six point two, Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-five-C, Conference with Legal Counsel. Anticipated litigation, number of cases, one, FTF Farms of Trinity Forest. A direction was also given to staff. Our closed session for today has one item, five point one, Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-four-point-five-E, Public Employee Appointment, County Council. Um, open, uh, public comment on closed session?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, that, we will move into closed session. Five minutes.